Congressman Mullen. All right, we're going to open up our special meeting tonight. It's late, almost 6:15. It's 6:12. And we have a special presentation tonight and a special guest. So with us, we have our, not, we have Congress, Congressman Kevin Mullen. Kevin, come, come sit up here with me. So we're going to read a proclamation and then we'll have counsel give some comments and then I'll have you give some comments. Does that work for you? Okay, I'm going to put my glasses on again. Okay. The proclamation of the City of Pacifica in recognition of Kevin Mullen. Honorable Kevin Mullen was elected to the California State Assembly representing the 22nd District in San Mateo County in 2012 and to California's 15th Congressional District on November 8th, 2022. Yay! Whereas Kevin Mullen has dedicated his life to public service in numerous capacities, acting throughout his career as South San Francisco Council Member and Mayor, District Director for then State Senator Jackie Speer, and Political Director for then State Assemblyman Jean Mullen. And whereas Kevin Mullen has authored over 60 bills signed into law covering issues such as election reform, campaign disclosures, public safety, climate change, transportation infrastructure, and economic opportunity for all. And whereas Kevin Mullen has achieved significant feats among those bills, which include all male voting, automatic voter registration, campaign disclosure regulations and enforcement, and a modernized vehicle license program that received the John F. Foreign Legislator of the Year Award from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. And whereas Kevin Mullen has advocated and continues to advocate for affordable housing, reproductive rights, quality and accessible health care, climate resilience, transportation funding, childcare and early childhood development, and workforce development. And whereas Kevin Mullen has advocated for Pacifica's coastal resilience projects and successfully secured more than $8 million in state funding for the city's coastline and pier. And whereas Kevin Mullen has promoted civic engagement and strengthened democracy in all of his endeavors. Now therefore, I, Mayor Beer, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Pacifica and all of its citizens do by honor and pay tribute to Kevin Mullen and thank him for his continuous commitment to our community done this 12th day of December. Wow, that's beautiful. I'm going to hand it to my mayor, Pro Tem, and we'll go around.
Hi, Kevin. You've spent your career being a friend to Pacifica. Some of my colleagues who have served with us a little longer, I'm sure can elaborate more than I can, but I wanted to begin by noting that and thanking you accordingly. You have worked tirelessly cultivating the spirit of democracy here in California. And as with that spirit, I know that you fly off to Washington, D.C. to strive to protect it nationwide. In personal time with you, I've spent a little time discussing the greater gravity of rising to the level of a national representative. And I'm so deeply grateful that someone who is as filled with thought will be one of the people casting the votes to make decisions that are remarkably difficult for anyone to have to make. And I cannot think of a human being whom is more deserving of making such decisions. That's most of what I have to say. You know, it's, I'm mildly annoyed that I will not get to vote for you anytime soon due to redistricting. And despite my quick love and adoration for Anna Eschew, I've had the opportunity to vote for you for almost as long as I can remember, and it would be nice to be able to continue to do so, but it is what it is. And while I won't be able to vote for you anytime soon, I know that you have remained open to my voice and the voice of our community, more importantly. And please do continue to remember us as you move forward in your career, which I'm sure you'll do amazing things with. Thank you.
Okay. I've known you for many, many, many years, and I've always appreciated how you're willing to listen to everything that we had to say. That's really important. And I'm so sorry also that you won't be representing us from now on. I do appreciate Anna also, and I'm sorry they redistricted because it puts our relationship, well, we'll still have a relationship, no big deal, right? And just wanted to thank you for everything you've done for us. We really appreciate you. I go back to when your dad was running. So I've seen you forever, and I thank you.
Ah, Kevin. The Mullen family, okay? They've represented North County, supported Pacifica for decades now. Your father, Jean, I always enjoy, I always seemed to run into him at different places, and we always had a chance to sit and shoot the breeze, you know? It's just two Irish guys, a government teacher, and assemblyman. He was, he's always been near to my heart, thinking about him. And now you're going on this adventure with two preschoolers, going to Washington and figure living coast to coast. But I'm sure your kids are similar to mine in that they watch one video a thousand times to where you start to memorize the thing. I remember one of my kids, my kids like this one song, "Old Friends, one is silver, one is gold." And I look at it this way, as you are our gold friend in Washington, and Anna will be our silver friend in Washington to help Pacifica through the capital and what we need now coming up. But I want to thank you for taking on this challenge, you know, of Washington. I think it will be, you know, you were in the majority in Sacramento, and you're definitely in the minority in Washington. But I wish you the best of luck for the rest of San Mateo County that's fortunate to have you as their rap. Thank you, Kevin, and thank you, wife Jennifer, and the two boys.
Kevin, thank you for everything you've done for me personally to get me to this point. I remember sitting and asking you very specific questions, trying to imagine myself sitting in that chair, trying to understand how all the pieces fit together and learning from you. And one of the things that I learned is the value of integrity, the value of being true to your word, of being straight, and of following through. And that is the kind of thing that you're going to bring with you to Washington, that you're going to represent us all so well. And you're going to, the thing that I feel so excited about, even though I'm sad that we're not going to have you right here, is that you're so ready for this. You, as a freshman congressman, no. You know how to build relationships, you have all of us, and we've got our relationships with you. And I know you're just going to just blast off when you get to Washington. There's no doubt in my mind. And so I, you know, I remember it was just about a year ago when we were talking about redistricting. And I remember you, I mean, I was supposed to already know, but you were the person who explained to me, "No, the redistricting lines are changing." And I was like, "No, no, they're not, no, no." I lived for about two weeks in the land of denial, and then I let it go, and I recognized that it doesn't matter because we have you anyway. And just as we've had the relationship with Jackie and with Congresswoman Speer and with, and we've built the relationship with Congresswoman Eschew, we're all a team. We're all representing San Mateo County and have your expertise in Washington. The work that we started here, working on shoreline issues, it's, you know, you've known for all the years that we've worked together, it's going to be a multi-year, multi, I don't know, decade process. And I'm looking forward to working with you as we move forward. Thank you.
Just so nobody thinks that Kevin's a polygamist, I apologize, Jessica, not Jennifer. It's the J E confused me. So anyhow, I just want to be sure that was clear for the record of Congress.
That's right, Jennifer's my sister. You may find this amusing. Literally this afternoon, I was, I said, I called her Jennifer because people do make that mistake quite often, given that my sister is named Jennifer. So your ears were burning or something, or my ears were burning, or somebody's ears were burning. But that topic came up this afternoon. Anyway, no problem, no worries about that. Jessica, thanks you, as do I. I am deeply grateful for such generous words. Thank you, Mayor Beer. Thank you each and every one of you. It has been such an honor to represent the City of Pacifica this past decade. I got to tell you, I was pretty surprised and moved really that you would actually take time on a special meeting to say those kind of words and to honor me on my way out the door. And please know you are in outstanding hands with Anna Eschew as your Congresswoman. And as a matter of fact, speaking of this afternoon, I was consulting with her about a vote we have. And yes, we're already taking votes in our caucus for changes to caucus rules and was getting her advice on some things. And she's got three decades of knowledge and experience that she's sharing with me, and I'm so very grateful. But you are in very, very good hands. So this indeed is a special community. 10 years ago, I didn't need to put these reading glasses on, by the way, but now I do. This community is unlike any other in San Mateo County. Breathtaking views, distinctive character in each neighborhood. You know, I, as I saw the camera here as I walked in, it reminded me way back in my twenties when I was a junior aide to then Assemblywoman Jackie Speer. I hosted a little show on PCT, Pacifica Community Television. Back then, it was Channel 8. And it was called Future Forum. And I was young enough to talk about issues affecting Generation X and out into the future, fiscal challenges and other challenges that young people were facing. So I have a long history of working in this community, and I've always been taken by the City of Pacifica. Shortly after I took office 10 years ago, I scheduled a tour of the Assembly District for my Capitol staff. The first place we visited was Pacifica and specifically NIX at Rockaway Beach to give them a feel for what Pacifica was about and this beautiful coast we have. I've spent much time here, continued to know the community, and enjoyed hosting my neighborhood coffees with Kevin at local venues like Mizetti's, Beach Monkey Cafe, and the Chit Chat Cafe. As Pacifica has weathered literal storms over the past decade, I was pleased to offer assistance with various storm damage repairs and infrastructure project, infrastructure projects in the community, especially proud of the 7.75 million from the state budget to assist with the Esplanade Infrastructure Preservation Project to prevent ongoing cliff erosion and much more to come on that front. And I shared with my staff on that trip just a little bit about the real independence, I think, that folks have in Pacifica. It's a really, it's an independent streak politically, one that I've always admired. And democracy feels very much alive and well right here in the City of Pacifica. It's on display during election cycles and off years as well. Just a little bit more on the budget, as was mentioned, my work with Senator Becker, the $500,000 for the Pacifica pier. And the challenges of climate change, you folks are dealing with this front and center. So much work to do addressing the coastal district. I have firsthand knowledge that was helpful in advocating for those funds in the state budget. So I too am deeply disappointed that Pacifica is not in the 15th Congressional District, which I will be representing as of January 3rd. But these coastal issues will continue to be in the forefront as they take on a new role, and natural resources issues will absolutely be in my portfolio. And I'll be working with the Congresswoman on this side of the hill to advocate for Pacifica, so please know that. And my colleague, Assembly Member Mark Berman, another champion of democracy and voting issues and a real leader on environmental issues as well, he will be so very proud to represent you. So I will miss participating in the Fog Fest, especially now that my boys enjoy riding in parades. They're big enough to be strapped in to the car. But I will look for an opportunity down the road to bring them over and pay a visit. And please know that I'll be a constant visitor with my wife and enjoying time in this community. As a South City boy, born and bred, lifelong resident, coming over the hills to Pacifica was and will continue to be what I do to find a sense of peace, comfort, purpose, solace right here in your beautiful community. And let me just say, I look forward to the redistricting process in 10 years when Pacifica is added to my district. So I'll be, I'll be crossing my fingers that that comes to pass. And if you'll allow me just the special privilege, I want to introduce Mario Rendon, a coastal resident, by the way. Mario is my district director and always has his eyes and ears open for opportunities to help your community. And he has been my number one confidant and conciliary, among other things. And he will continue to be my district director, serving San Mateo County. And also just special privilege, since I've been really inundated with so many kind messages and texts and so forth, I see Horace Hinshaw in the front row, one of my favorite people. Thank you, sir, for your kindness and your message and for all that you do for this community. So with that, thank you all. I wish you a productive evening and productive week as you go through your reorganization activities. And consider me a lifelong friend of Pacifica, and I'm so, so grateful for your kindness.
So we're going to go ahead and open it up for public comment. Well, I appreciate the card. It's, it's okay for folks just to come up. Is that true? Yeah. So Cindy, you come up first, and then after Cindy, please feel free to come on up and share some thoughts with Congressman Mullen.
Go on this step. Hi, Kevin. Cindy Abbott, Pacifica resident, and thank you for everything you've done for democracy as well as community, because I know you with wearing different community hats. So I wanted to say thank you from Sanchez Art Center, where Kevin's been one of the champion in the state legislature for the arts, funding the California Arts Council that Sanchez Art Center has received grants on for a number of years, including this year, which supports our Sanchez Goes to School program at Sunset Ridge, which is the only way that that school, all the kids there, are able to get an arts education every year through funding from that program. You've come and visited the art center at different times after your coffee with Kevin one time at the Beach Monkey. We never got you there because the pandemic happened to host a coffee with Kevin there on site. And we also appreciate the local focus that you've had because we've been able to share with you artwork at the request of you and your staff to show the work of local coastside artists here from Pacifica and the San Mateo Coast in your offices in Sacramento. And that really meant a lot to the artists that we shared your, the work there to have that presence and to have the beautiful coastside represented. And then, of course, we've known each other for several years with Skyline College and the Success Summit, and those events wouldn't have been the same without you being there. Your expertise in facilitating, leading so many of the different conversations over the year, just, just can't thank you enough. And Mario too, because you were the one that makes sure that he got there on time and coordinated all of that. So anyway, I didn't want to let you run off without saying our thanks for supporting art as well as community. So thank you so very much. And best to Jessica and the twins, and look forward to watching them grow.
Thank you, Cindy. Is there someone else who'd like to come up? Of course, I knew you would.
I'll stand up here too, too, Cindy. It's great seeing you, Kevin. And I'm going to, you know, I'm not going to lose you, but you'll be around. I just really just want to thank you for all the times. I've called on your office several times over the years as the editor of the Tribune and also as the president of the Pacifica Sports Club with the Hall of Fame. And you've been so generous and you've been, you know, master of ceremonies for us. I go as far as back as your dad. He came and did the same things with us. And you're just a great family. I just really appreciate knowing you and being able to say, "Hey, we're friends," and it's been really great. You, you, how did it have been about the Fog Fest? I just had to share this with you. I didn't, didn't think about it until, but my wife and I were talking the other day. It came up, and I'm coming here just to say congratulations and best wishes. And you know, she said, "Isn't he the man that was in the car behind us at the Fog Fest when I was the..." At Marshallity of the Fog Fest? I said, "Yes, he's, he was that." And she said, "He was so nice." He came over and talked to both myself, didn't speak for my wife, and my two granddaughters. So just to tell you that, hey, you're, you're well-known in my family because of the way you treated them. So I really appreciate it. Lots of luck. And just a little bit more, you will get a letter from me this year because I probably will send you something saying, "Hey, I want your signature on something for the Pacifica Sports Hall of Fame," which is coming up in February. Lots of luck.
Thank you, Horace. Is there anyone else who'd like to come up? Emily, do we have anyone on the phone? No. Okay. Well, there's refreshments in the back. Please take time and talk to Kevin. We have a few moments with him. So thank you so much. We know you're the perfect person for this job. Oh, sure, and pictures. Okay, hello, everybody. Hello. Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the City of Pacifica City Council. We're opening the meeting at 7 o'clock. It's the 12th of December. Can we have call to order, Sarah? I mean, rule call.
Start the rule call with Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Present.
Councilmember Vodelas.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Big Stick.
Present.
Mayor Beer.
Here.
I'd just like to remind you all, if you could get a parking pass from downstairs and put it on your dashboard in your car so you don't get a ticket, they're right down in the lobby. Just so you know, I don't want anybody getting a ticket tonight. All right, I'm going to read the land acknowledgement. "The City of Pacifica acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramatush Aloni peoples, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Ramatush Aloni peoples for their enduring commitment..." Sorry. "...to Mother Earth. As the indigenous protectors of this land and in accordance with their traditions, the Ramatush Aloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. We affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples and wish to pay our respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramatush Aloni people." We'll now salute the flag led by Mayor Pro Tem Big Stick.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Attorney, do we have a closed session report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do not have any reportable action this evening.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, so the first thing we have is a special presentation of a proclamation for Tom Piccolotti for his years of service at the North County, or now North Coast County Water District. He couldn't be here tonight. He has a City Council meeting of his own in Daly City, but I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation anyways, and then I will bring it to him on Friday night at his retirement party. Okay, "A proclamation of the City of Pacifica in recognition of Tom Piccolotti. Whereas the tenure of the Honorable Tom Piccolotti with the North Coast County Water District Board of Directors is drawing to a close following 28 years of service, eight years of which he has served as the Board Vice President and nine years which he has served as a Board President. And whereas Tom Piccolotti has dedicated his life to public service in numerous capacities, acting throughout his career as Assistant Superintendent of the Public Works Department for the City of Pacifica, the Collection and Distribution Manager for the City of Daly City, the Director of Department of Water and Wastewater Resources for the City of Daly City, and the subsidiary North San Mateo County Sanitation District, and now the interim City Manager of the City of Daly City. And whereas Tom Piccolotti has numerous capital improvement projects through his contributions as Capital Improvement Program Committee Member, including the construction of the 3.75 million gallon Christian Hill Tank, the replacement and development of the new 600,000 gallon Sheila Tank, and the coordination of the District Headquarters Upgrade Project. And whereas Tom Piccolotti has facilitated interagency projects and infrastructure improvements with the North Coast County Water District and the City of Pacifica, the most notable being Pacifica's Recycled Water Project, which saves over 16 million gallons of potable water each year. And whereas Tom Piccolotti has long promoted the importance of water conservation education in Pacifica schools and the greater community, enhancing public respect and trust in the North Coast County Water District and its operations. And whereas Tom Piccolotti has advocated for the protection, development, and improvement of water rights, water supplies, water systems, and alternative water supply resources for the benefit of the North Coast County Water District and his constituents. Now therefore, I, Mayor Beer, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Pacifica and all its citizens, do hereby honor and pay tribute to Tom Piccolotti and thank him for his continuous commitment done this 12th day of December." And there's also commendations from Senator Becker's And there's also commendations from Senator Becker's office, but I won't read that to you tonight. Sarah, did you wanna check in about anything for our meeting as far as like calling in for public comment or anything like that?
I'll bring up the slide for the dial-in.
Thank you.
For those wishing to comment on the special presentation tonight, watching the meeting remotely, you can dial in to 1-650-898-6965. Enter conference ID 383609442. Once you're in the call queue, press star five to raise your hand to request to speak on an agenda item. Once called upon by the last four digits of your phone number, you can press star six to unmute. State your full name at the start of your comment, and listen through your phone. Mute any background noise when you're dialed in connection.
Thank you so much, Sarah. I appreciate you. All right, so we have an announcement and introduction of new city employees. Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. How exciting, we have new employees.
Thank you, Mayor Beer, Mayor Protem Bigstick, and Councilmembers, Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I really am pleased to do something unique tonight, and we have a handful of new employees that are here with us, taking time out of their evening. They normally might not come to city council meetings, but they are here tonight. And I'd like to call them up to the podium, and I'm gonna introduce each one of them. Just come up all together, if you wouldn't mind, and stand up here. I think you all know who you are. And in addition, we do have a PowerPoint that we can put up, and we'll go through that. I'll say a little bit about each of these new employees, and then there are even more new employees that couldn't make it tonight, and we have their pictures and slides. So, before I begin, I, this is a really unique opportunity, but I wanna make a comment about how important this is. Right now, in our country, the job market is really hot. People get distracted by, you know, tech cutoffs and stuff, and layoffs and such. That's only 2% of the employees in our country. Jobs are hot, and it's hard to attract and retain quality employees right now. And Pacifica has been very successfully, successful recently in doing that. And so, while we have picked these employees, and the other ones you'll see, more importantly, they've picked us. And I think that just speaks volumes to what Pacifica has become. It's a place people want to work at, and I really hope each of these employees has a long and successful career in public service, but specifically a long and successful career in Pacifica. So, but we had this kind of coalescing of a lot of new employees recently, in the past few months, and some go back to the summertime. And so, we just thought, let's take the opportunity, introduce them to the council at a meeting publicly on TV, and just really celebrate that. So, I want to begin with Bob Palacio, the new Director of Parks, Beaches, and Recreation. And as the council knows, he's overlapping with retiring Director Mike Perez for a couple weeks before the holidays. Bob has been working in the Parks and Rec fields since 1991, and has over 20 years of Parks and Rec management experience. He recently was the Community Services Manager in the City of San Mateo Parks and Rec Department, and before that, served more than 26 years in the San Francisco Rec and Parks Department. We could clap, we could clap each time, you know, just be an informal thing. After I finish all of these introductions, I'll invite any of them. I told them they didn't have to speak, but I'll invite any of them that might want to say a word if they would like. Next, we have Emily Law, and Emily's actually been introduced before, because she's been serving here as the deputy city clerk, but I just did wanna highlight her again, our new deputy city clerk. She came to Pacifica from the San Mateo County Registration and Elections Division, and Emily holds an English degree from the University of California, Irvine. Emily? Next, we have Jenny Kenway, our new executive assistant to the city manager. And, oop, let me find my other notes. Jenny comes to Pacifica from the San Mateo County Human Services Agency, Children and Family Services, where she's worked for the past five years. She, prior to that, she also worked for a private insurance company, and this various experience working at a law office, as a marketing intern in an insurance company, makes her exceptionally qualified for the multi varied tasks as executive assistant. And Jenny holds a BA in Communications from San Francisco State University, and she was also raised in Pacifica and a Terranova High School graduate. Jenny. Next is Stephanie Cervantes, Senior Planner in the Planning Department. And Stephanie is from Orange County, and recently moved to the Bay Area. She has a master's degree in urban and regional planning, and five years of experience in municipal planning. Welcome Stephanie. Also in the Planning Department, we have Katie Snodgrass, Assistant Planner. Katie is from, graduated from Cal Poly San Luis Obispo this past June with a Bachelor's of Science in Environmental Management and Protection, and she also worked with Caltrans as a student biologist. Very happy to have Katie with us. And rounding out our new employees in planning, we have Associate Planner James Lynn. James is a graduate from UC Santa Barbara, and he has three years of professional experience as an environmental planner for DUDAC in Santa Barbara, and worked also as a county planner for Madera County. Welcome James. And as you can see in the photo, I think that James likes to surf too. So, one of our attractions, right? We also have Lucy Shea, and Lucy is our new Deputy Director of Finance. Lucy has many years, 20 years of professional experience in accounting, taxation, budgeting, and financial reporting. She graduated from Cal State East Bay with an MBA in accounting and finance, and she worked for two local San Francisco public accounting firms, received her CPA license. She comes to us having worked in the city of Berkeley, as well as a 10-year stint with the city of, or I'm sorry, she worked in El Cerrito as well. I'm not sure where the tenure was. I think that was with Berkeley, and then she continued in El Cerrito. So, very happy to have Lucy in this position. Welcome. And we have Michael Hand, Park Ranger in the Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Department. Very happy to have Michael with us, and he's excited to be here too. He's a Bay Area native, but he had most recently been working for the US Fish and Wildlife at Mono Moi National Wildlife Refuge on Cape Cod. So coastal, but the other coast, and probably a different environment, and very happy to have Michael with us. Welcome Michael. I'll have to tell a brief story. I went on a walk at lunch the other day and ran across Michael down by the beach, and he was chatting with some beachgoers and talking about sea anemones. So, you know, they were having a good conversation about sea anemones. So I think, did I cover everyone here? Yes. So if anyone would like to say any words, you don't have to, unless the mayor says that you have to, but if you would like to step up and say anything, please, please do that. Otherwise, I'll continue on with the rest of the presentation.
Okay, great.
Good evening, Mayor Beer, members of the council. Bob Palacio, Director of Parks, Beaches, and Recreation. Today is my first day, and I just wanted to say how grateful I am to Kevin for the opportunity, and I look forward to working with you, to serve the people of Pacifica. So thank you so much.
We're happy to have you on board. And just so y'all know, we are very happy to see you all here tonight. So thank you for choosing Pacifica. We look forward to seeing you do all your stuff.
All right. Thank you all. You don't have to remain standing, but I do wanna continue with quite a number of other new employees. And I'll begin with Reginald Bivins Jr., Electrical Instrumentation Technician One in Wastewater. So happy to have Reginald here. I mean, joining the Pacifica team. We have Jesse Mariscal, Operator One, Maintenance Mechanic in Wastewater. Jorge Hernandez, Maintenance Worker One. Pleased to have all of these employees with us. Mark Edwards, Operator Two for Wastewater as well. Got some good pictures too. And we have Audi Mealy, Police Officer, as well as you've met interim chief Kirk Stratton. But Kirk doesn't get to come up and say anything. He can wave. And continuing on here, we have Michaela Salacup, our Human Resources Analyst. She is our two-year limited term analyst position, really helping out in HR. I'll just comment about HR right now. Recruitments, you're seeing the fruition of those recruitments, retention efforts, everything else HR is working on. It is incredibly busy, so we're very happy to have Michaela's help. And last but not least is Elizabeth Brooks, who joined us back in the city back in August, went back, you know, to the summertime as a management analyst in both planning and the city manager. That completes the new employees. There are also a large number of competitive and internal promotions that have occurred, and I don't have, I'm not presenting that list tonight, but it's been busy on that front as well. So, thank you for the opportunity to present and introduce new employees and celebrate them tonight.
Thank you. We know how hard you worked to get them all here. Just so our community understands, look at all those folks we just hired. That means those were positions that were not filled before. And so, we're super grateful. Does anyone else want to say anything?
Thank you for joining the city. They've all left, so, except one.
Madam Mayor, just to confirm, there's no public comment either on the line or in person?
Thank you.
There are none on the line.
Thank you, City Attorney. Appreciate that. All right, we're gonna move on to the consent calendar. If any councilmembers wish to pull an item from consent, please do so now. Seeing none, I will open up public comment. This is public comment on anything on the consent calendar, items one through 10. You can dial in 650-898-6965. Conference ID is 383609442. Press star five to raise your hand, and star six to unmute. And if you are on the line, please mute any background sound and listen through your phone. It will help with the delay. We have no cards from the audience. Emily, do we have anybody on the line?
There are none.
Okay, then we will close public comment and bring it back to council.
I move that we approve the consent calendar as is.
Second.
Consent calendar passes unanimously.
Okay. It's now time for oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the city council on any issue that is not on the agenda. Any person wishing to address the council shall be recognized by the mayor during oral communications, provided however, that during oral communications portion of the agenda, only items not on the agenda for that meeting may be addressed. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. Council members shall not enter into debate with speakers or any, with any speakers under the oral, under oral communications. Maximum time is three minutes. I do see a few cards. We'll start with Anita Reese, followed by Nina Phillips.
Hello. Anita Reese with the Pacifica Resource Center, and I just wanted to provide some updates. We provided Thanksgiving groceries and gift cards to 516 Pacifica residents, including children. Echo away? Oh, sorry. We're also still enrolling for Holiday Joy. To date, we have 82 families with 160, 160 children that are matched with sponsors in the community. So call us if you need or want to offer help during the holidays. We also hired our Economic Security and Volunteer Coordinator. His name is Darwin Lopez. He started today. He will be coordinating our tax program, our seasonal programs, and volunteer programs. Tax season starts for us on Saturday, January 28th, so please give us a call if you need help with your taxes, or if you want to volunteer to be a tax preparer. We're always looking for tax preparers. We're also currently recruiting for an outreach specialist. The job description is on Indeed, or you can email Pacifica Resource Center Hiring at gmail.com, and we would love to interview you. I wanted to provide a couple of safe parking program highlights. So this week will be our sixth cycle of 29-day permits. All nine spaces are filled with one person on the wait list. Since beginning in June of 2022, we've provided permits to 13 folks. Four have been exited, but are receiving services as needed. I wanted to share that 42% are older adults of the folks that we're serving currently. One is a transition age youth. The rest are kind of in between 27 and 54. Half of the folks that we've served consider Pacifica their hometown. 12, 13% are from San Mateo County, and the rest are from California or outside of California. 38% have lived in Pacifica for 20 or more years. 38% have lived here four or more years. So the vast majority have been and are from Pacifica, or have been here for several years. They've been in their motor homes. 25% of them have been here, living in their motor homes or a vehicle for four to six years, and 50%, half of them have been in their vehicles or motor home for one to three years. They became unhoused primarily because of eviction. 63% because of eviction, 25% because of separation from their partners, and they couldn't afford to pay rent. And so they started to live in their vehicles and potentially had a motor home. All are working? Well, 75% are working, 25% are disabled. And of the folks who are in the program right now, three are in the process of becoming housed, we hope, before the holidays. One is through a place based in the VA, and two are with one to five-year vouchers.
Thank you so much, Anita. Nina Phillips.
Hello.
Hi there. Hi. I'm Nina Phillips, and I'm joining today as a representative from HIP Housing, which is an affordable housing nonprofit operating throughout San Mateo County. We've served the county for 50 years, and invest in human potential by improving housing and the lives of people in our community. On the behalf of HIP Housing, I would like to thank the Honorable Mayor and the members of the City of Pacifica for your enduring support of our organization and affordable housing solutions. As a symbol of our appreciation, I would like to present the council- As a symbol of our appreciation, I would like to present the Council with Hip Housing's 2023 calendar. This calendar features art from 12 young artists throughout the county. So, it's on each page that's got a different piece of art and some hip facts as well. And these artworks were selected from a pool of 250 entries. Every month corresponds with a drawing of a home and a quote that answers the question, "What does home mean to you?" "You're so proud to work throughout San Mateo County and the City of Pacifica to create affordable housing solutions for low-income families and individuals." Each year, we house over 1,200 people thanks to our strong partnerships with local governments. In the City of Pacifica, there's currently 28 people in Hip Housing Home Sharing Matches. Clients of ours include receptionists, nail technicians, handymen, security guards, airport clerks, teachers, nannies, bakery managers, and more. We're super excited to be here and present this to you today. I'd just like to take one more extra moment to share with you a winner from Pacifica. She couldn't be here tonight, but her name's Melanie. This is her work of art here. She's in the fourth grade, and her holiday-themed drawing really blew our judges away. They loved it. And I would like to read her quote to you now. "What my home means to me is that we have a roof over our heads. That is good because not everyone has one, and it can keep you dry from the rain. Another reason why my home is special to me is because I have a family that lives with me, and they care and love me." "We hope that our calendar resonates with you and spurs you to consider the importance of safe and stable home, especially in a region that is so defined by housing challenges. I ask you that you spread the word of our programs so that we can support individuals and families in our community. Please feel free to reach out to me or check out the Hip Housing website if you would like any more information about our innovative affordable housing programs." Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember O'Neil, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of clarify to be sure that the public knows what they are is, in my job, I get the monthly newsletter from Hip Housing in regards to home sharing. And I post it on the bulletin board community for people to look at. And there is the most ripped-off-the-wall list of housing of anybody, okay? Because I have to keep going out there and replacing it because people are using it. And what they do is if, like, we have a lot of seniors in Pacifica that are rattling around these big houses, their families moved out, you know, the kids are raised and have their own houses, that this is an opportunity for residents to rent out a room to someone that might just need the room and maybe $1,000 a month. So, it's reasonable for the person renting, and you're also, as a senior, getting some extra income. So, and so they, and what's nice about Hip is they'll do the credit check for you, background, negotiations, everything for you. So, it doesn't put you in the position. And you get to interview them and see, is this someone you want to live with? So, it's an excellent program that's fairly sorely needed in our area due to the high cost of rent. But it also serves a need for seniors that might be living in the house alone. And, you know, it doesn't hurt to have a companion to talk to. So, I would encourage anybody that needs that service to call Hip.
Thanks, Mike.
All right. Thank you.
Do we have anyone on the line, Emily? Okay. Seeing no more hands or cards, I will close Public Comment. Bring it back to council for Council Communications. Who would like to go first? Sue Vardalas?
I have a long list today.
Okay, great. Go for it.
I'll go first. I went to the Fog Fest Distribution where they gave the checks to the community, and each group got $2,200 per segment, and that was a big event. Anyway, I went to an electrification meeting, which I've been to many, but I keep learning. Beach Coalition's 25th anniversary, the Labor Lunch. I went to the city tree lighting in the elf market. I went to the castle with the Historical Society. I tried to go to Holly Jolly Palooza, but it was so packed that I couldn't get in. The Rockaway Tree Lighting was a big success. Unfortunately, it rained in the middle, but the kids still had a great time, and the parents. I went to a leadership conference. I met a reporter regarding short-term rentals, which was interesting because she had a lot of additional information about short-term rentals. Went to Mike Perez's retirement. The City and County Association of Governments Legislative, which was a really fast meeting because they don't have any legislative items yet. The City and County Association of Governments Regular Meeting where they just gave us presentations. The Recovery Coordination Council is still happening. There are a lot more cases of COVID out there. There's also RSV, which is a virus. And there are a lot of diseases going on. One of the most interesting things I learned about was that they have learned a lot from sewage. I've heard about it before, but they're finding additional diseases that they can find out through sewage. And it's really, it's an interesting fact for them that they never would have done without COVID. And I worked at the PCT, the Cable TV Auction. That was fun. And I went to the Sanchez Arts Center for their arts and craft shows. It was busy a couple of weeks.
Yeah. Thank you. Mike O'Neil.
Let's see. I went to a, a lot of the same stuff that my colleague went to. I went to the tree lighting ceremony. It was well-attended. I think there's probably a couple thousand people there. A little bit down from what it was. The parade down Palmetto Avenue happened. I also went, sad to report, a couple notable figures passed away this week in Pacifica. Father Leahy, who used to be the pastor at Good Shepherd, passed away. And also, an elected official from the school board, Jerry Tricocci, passed away this week also. Matter of fact, his funeral is tomorrow at 11 o'clock at St. Peter's. And the thing I remember about Father Leahy is he was just a nice guy, you know, just sit there, shoot the breeze and stuff. But him and his dog Owen used to just walk all over the hills of Pacifica, you know? And he was just a really nice gentleman before he moved on. Attended the Airport Roundtable. And they are going to be, they've been able to implement a new kind of reporting. Right now, you can get these apps, and you point it at the plane, and it'll tell you it's Flight 1234 from, you know, Siberia or wherever. But now, that information is actually going to be in the Airport Director's Report that is sent out. And they send it to us, but they tell us we can't send it to people. So, I don't know if it's a public document or not, but you'll be able to see if there's one, let's say this, what the public will be able to see is if there's one plane at 11 o'clock every night that goes by that sounds like, you know, it's from Gilligan's Island, you can take and report that airline, that plane, that flight, and it will be specified in the report now, which I thought was interesting, okay? I also attended the PCT Auction, and they raised over $4,000 on Saturday night, except for the, that does not include their online auction, which is apparently going on right now. So, if you want to, still want to hear the council talk, go to PC Pacific Coast TV, and you can go to the online auction and probably bid on that harp because I imagine it's still there. So, anyhow, that's it for me.
Thanks, Mike. Councilmember Beckmeyer?
I did not have very many meetings this last two weeks, which I'm pleased to report because the week, the time before, I had quite a lot. I didn't go to quite all of the events that Councilmember Vardalas outlined, but I will say that the tree lighting in Rockaway Beach was very festive. There was a particularly long line for Santa and well-managed by Santa's elf, I might say. And what I was most taken by in being at that event and then hearing about the Holly Jolly Palooza with just the amount of people that had turned out, it's clear to me that our community is ready to reengage with each other. And, you know, at the very same time, we're hearing about increasing COVID rates, and we have RSV, and we have flu all circulating. So, it's so important to continue testing, to wear a mask when you're indoors and around a lot of people, and to just stay as healthy as we can because we're all indoors now and sharing our little germs. I will also say that despite the rain at the tree lighting, people were dancing in the street. With rain or not, umbrellas, it didn't matter. It was a really fun, fun event and well-planned and well-executed. So, thank you, community, for that. I had one meeting of the Sea Lev, of the Coastal Cities Group, Sea Level Rise Planning Group, looking at anticipatory meetings, preparing for the January 27th meeting in Santa Barbara. There are interviews. What we're doing is working with small groups and interviewing key stakeholders in advance to help shape the agenda for that night. So, I had the opportunity to sit in on two meetings this last week, and I'll have one more this week. I met with Don Schmitz and two other people from Smart Coast, which was a very productive meeting and interesting to hear their perspectives. Looking forward to some data that they are bringing forward from a study, the Millions, Milliken, Milli, somebody, starts with an M, study that they have, they're going to proffer, which I'm not sure how they arrived at this, but it's an actuarial firm. And what they've done is pulled data where they're able to overlay data about sea level rise and the impacts and flooding and FEMA data and NOAA data with parcel, at the parcel level. So, it will be something that we'll be able to look in segment by segment and even drilling, they say, I haven't seen the data yet, drilling down to the parcel level, which is very interesting in trying to get our arms around the impact and planning for the impact of sea rise and coastal erosion. The whole goal of these meetings and the agenda we're shaping for the January 27th meeting is to look at what are the key issues that the groups are contending with in planning and looking forward? So, the Smart Coast meeting happened. The day before that, the Surf Rider Foundation meeting happened. I wasn't part of that group. I met with Dr. Charles Lester, who we know, who was the former Executive Director of the Coastal Commission and is presently a professor at UC Santa Barbara, I think. He'll probably be presenting part of the agenda on the 27th. And he looks at things from like this really big perspective because, you know, the academic point of view. But he also brings that wealth of on-the-ground experience. So, he understands that while we're looking at large data sets and we're looking at big impacts, and that the Coastal Commission is trying to make policy decisions for the entire coast of California, he also recognizes, and he specifically remembered the experiences in Pacifica when he was here with our Sea Level Rise Adaptation Strategy Meetings. And he understands very keenly the concerns and the interests that individuals have around what's going to happen with their property and the worry that they have about how policy is going to be developed and implemented and the impact that it's going to have for them. So, we're looking at all of those issues and really trying to grapple with them. It's something we've been going to look at, need to look at. Ooh, those are big issues, elephant-in-the-room issues. We can't not talk about them. We can't, and we have to get to these issues and really focus and look at what is the right approach? Is it a neighborhood approach? Is it a regional approach? How do we address the coming sea rise challenges? And that's what I'm working on with these meetings. And I'll keep you posted about the agenda as it moves forward and share that with the City Manager, who will share out with all of you.
Go ahead, Mike.
I just want to make a comment on this Milliken study that you were mentioning, or whatever. I think there is a concern that with the data broken down to the parcel, we could start getting back into a redlining format in regards to housing, okay? And there's a, needs to be a real caution regarding the privacy rights and the fact that, you know, because if you extrapolate that to... Some hazards can be mitigated through engineering measures. However, if the parcel says this, then are they going to be charged a higher interest rate? Are they going to be charged a higher insurance premium? Or is premium going to have to end up? Does the Fair Plan, which as far as I know, the Fair Plan only covers fire, but will the Fair Plan then have to be sorted out to start covering sea level rise and flooding, okay? Or is that going to be left to FEMA, okay? But I really would be concerned about a form of redlining that could be developed by the insurance industry and the bank lending industry if it goes, breaks down into parcels? Because we're already seeing that with fire danger. Okay.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. I'll bring that forward. Thanks. Any other thoughts on those kinds of, please share.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As always, Ukraine going into winter time now is well on my mind. I met with some of the candidates for city selection from some of the council people from municipalities around us. And of course, if any of my fellow members have feedback. So, on the first, I had the opportunity of meeting with Cub Scout PAC 216 at Ortega Library, a group of fifth graders. They were working on their Building a Better World badge, and I was happy to answer some questions for them. So, I just wanted to say hello to Cameron, Kai, Lyndon, Max, Taylor, and Zach, and thank you for inviting me to spend some time with you. Later that evening, the Beach Coalition held their 25th anniversary party, and I was happy to attend that with Councilmember Vardalas. And our new County Supervisor, Ray Mueller, was also in attendance. And I was very happy to see that he was still participating robustly even after the votes had been counted, showing that he is truly a partner and will be going forward. I had the opportunity to meet with Marlena Sessions from Nova Works. This Nova Works is a job training and job placement service that is funded primarily through the federal government, but they also get foundation support. They have various workshops online at novaworks.com. But they also have, one of their members, Kim Pham, who shows up at the Sharp Park Library on Wednesdays from 1:00 to 3:00. So, if you're trying to figure out maybe what your next step is in a career path, or if you know somebody who maybe needs help figuring out their next step, it could be as simple as just showing up on Wednesday at the Sharp Park Library. That's their mission, is to help people figure out job path. I attended the tree lighting with my fellow council representatives and also had the opportunity to attend the Labor Council Lunch. And that's most of what I did. One of my constituents wanted me to let folks know that she's quite proud of the holiday lights that they have at 35 Humboldt Court. Apparently, they go on about 5:30 and go off somewhere around 10:00. If you catch them on the weekends, apparently, the neighbors have hot chocolate and cookies and are willing to share if you're there at the right time. And there may be some sort of quiz dropbox thing going on. So, especially on the weekends between 5:00 and 10:00, check it out. It's supposed to be pretty magical. Aside from that, I just wanted to say thank you for the Public Works Department, for all the work they did, helping us with the storms over the weekend. Staff, if you could elaborate, I'd appreciate. And also, I hear Ryan Marquez has... And also I hear Ryan Marquez is our employee of the quarter from the Public Works Department. And again, if staff can elaborate, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Vaterlaus.
Also, this weekend, Saturday, the 17th, from 12:00 to 5:00, Merry Manor Art Walk. It's the second annual market, bring your own mug for refreshments, that's what reminded me. And they have a map with 13 houses you can go visit where each crafts person has their artworks for sale. Perfect timing, right before Christmas for those who forgot to buy stuff.
Thank you so much. Okay, so where do I start? I went to the building lighting and the elf market at the community center, which was so wonderful to see all those young people singing and I was standing behind them, looking out at all of the parents who were watching their kids and it was so cool. Just everyone was so happy. And I was able to go in and talk to the vendors in the elf market who we haven't been, you know, I haven't seen some of them for a little while, so it was really nice. Holly Dolly in Eureka Square was like off the hook. It was, I don't know what I was expecting, but it was so just legit, like it was a really great event. I hope they continue it. There were so many happy people there, so that's what it's all about. And then I got to be the elf with our Santa Claus here, Councilmember O'Neal, at the Rockaway Tree Lighting. It was super soggy, but really fun. And Mike, you are so good with those kids, really good. So thank you to everybody who worked so hard on all of those events. I attended the surprise party for Mike Perez, who's our outgoing Director of Parks, Beaches and Recreation. It was really nice to see folks there and, Mike, we love you, we're gonna miss you. I attended the Coast Pride Board Meeting where we're talking about the Pride Events here in Pacifica, Half Moon Bay and Pescadero. What else did I do? I attended the PCT Auction where I got to work with Jonathan Margum and Cheryl, who does the sea glass. It was really fun. Oh, and the Girl Scout troop, who was there for like two hours answering the phones. They were amazing, so thank you, Girl Scout troop. I didn't get the number of the troop, but I'll figure that out.
I actually, if you don't mind me interrupting, I was gonna press my button to say to you, the Girl Scouts, the troop comes out of Cabrillo School, they were thrilled to work with you, super excited. I heard all about it this morning and I will get you in touch with them.
Perfect. Yeah, I want to go to their meeting and hear about their project. So yeah, thank you so much. That makes me feel good. Thank you. I attended the Cal Cities Peninsula Division Executive Committee Retreat where we'll be planning our three or four events that we'll be having over the next year, focusing on housing, housing elements, economic development, and discussions about the Brown Act with regional meetings. So it was really good to get to know folks from Santa Clara County and San Mateo County coming together to work on these things. I really look forward to that. I wanted to give you an update about the Pacifica Collaborative. I'm really proud to say that the folks in the collaborative have agreed to come together to respond to the acts of hate in our community. And so we've had, we had a planning meeting and then we had the Pacifica Collaborative meeting where we now have three work groups. One work group will be working on events. Another one is researching best practices from other communities. And then we have a media and messaging group as well. So stay tuned to see what comes out of those groups. I'm really happy to have such a wonderful group of people who are willing to step up and take leadership of these groups, of these work groups. Yeah, thank you so much, Pacifica Collaborative. I did attend the Fog Fest Distribution, which is the first time I ever went to that, so it was really nice to see all the different groups that were there and watch them get their checks. That was exciting. I look forward to the Merry Manor this weekend, so thank you for bringing that up. And then our Pacifica Hot Rods have their holiday toy run this Friday night, is that right, Chris Redfield? Yep, so back at Park Mall, 6:00. I think that's right, too. You could decorate your car, doesn't have to be a hot rod, come join the parade, it's gonna be great. Thank you always to Pacifica Hot Rods. And now I'm done and I'll hand it over to City Manager Woodhouse.
Thank you, Mayor Beer, council members. Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. Just a few quick announcements. One is that I wanted to mention, and we have the information, putting that out there on social media as well as our website, about the upcoming holiday closure. The nonessential, non-emergency offices will be closed during the holidays, starting Friday the 23rd through Monday the 2nd. Next announcement is a good news one, which is that the Transit Authority officially approved our two project grant applications totaling $783,504. These are for the 2022 Bike Ped Program, $583,000 for the Esplanade-Palmetto Project and $200,000 related to school crossings. So great news, significant grant award. And I will, in a second here, read information about Ryan Marquez's employee of the quarter. But a good segue to that is that the city, not only those grant applications, but also we just finished a significant effort to apply for the next round, as soon as I can find the notes here. The next round of the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Federal Grant, this is called the BRIC grant application for our Beach Boulevard Infrastructure Resiliency Project. This is a grant application, significant undertaking to put it together. We learned and got lots of feedback from Cal OES and FEMA about last year's application to approve, improve upon for this year's cycle. And Ryan Marquez did the bulk of the work on that with our consultants. So moving on then to Ryan's recognition as the Public Works Employee of the Fourth Quarter of 2022. I'll read the description I have here. Ryan started working with the city as an engineering intern and was eventually hired as an assistant engineer in 2014. Through his work excellence, attention to detail and collaborative style, he has worked up to a key project manager position in the Engineering Department. Ryan's a registered civil engineer, is active in the City and County Engineers Association of San Mateo County, heading the Emerging Leaders Program in CCEA. Ryan is a skilled engineer, manages Pacifica's coastal projects along with others, and that include what I just mentioned, the multimillion dollar Bieber Project, Beach Boulevard Infrastructure Resiliency Project, the Pier Project, the Esplanade Bluff Stabilization Projects. Through his hard work, he has moved these critical projects forward and secured millions of dollars in grant funding for the important capital project work. He also works closely with the Planning Department, completing all Public Works-related engineering reviews of building permits. Ryan delivers excellent customer service, even in difficult situations with upset residents, by providing straightforward and accurate information and working to help resolve any problems. He presents frequently to the City Council, giving important project presentations on complicated engineering issues that are clear and understandable for the public and council. He's a team player and appreciated by his coworkers and brings trust and credibility to all the work he manages and to the department. That was complete.
Way to go, Ryan. Thank you.
I know, and unfortunately, he's not presenting tonight, so I don't think he's here.
That's okay, you can tell him.
Hey, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just wanted to follow up on one of my previous comments. Mr. City Manager, if you could talk for just a moment or perhaps Director Peterson could talk a little bit about the work that Public Works Department did on the storms this weekend?
Let's see, I may have some information that was in a separate message. I'll turn to Director Peterson for some of the specifics. I know that we were proactive in reaching out to Caltrans prior to the storm and they were out working on the area underneath the Manor over crossing. However, there was still some flooding there, so we'll continue working with Caltrans on that. But Public Works did respond and cleared grates during the storm. And then if Director Peterson has any additional storm-related details, as I just don't have them in front of me.
Guys, just wanted to ask a quick question is, when they, I know this is, they're working on the Manor overpass, but as part of that overpass work, will they also be working on the under part that always floods like that?
That's also a good question for Director Peterson. I'm not quite sure.
Okay. Because no, there were some people in Millbury that actually drowned last year in that very similar situation.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you for those questions. Lisa Peterson, Director of Public Works. To let you know, when we do the Manor over crossing, they'll be looking at all the infrastructure in that area as well as the storm drainage. We have been in constant contact with Caltrans regarding the flooding that's been happening under the over crossing. Most recently last week, they actually sent out their, you know, crews to go check out a couple of the storm drains that are just north of the location that floods underneath the over crossing and cleared those out. In discussions with them, again, today, I showed them some pictures of what happened over the weekend and they did say that they're on it. They showed me some pictures of locations they felt were having some clogging issues that they were going to be clearing and they felt that the issue was going to get better after they took care of that. So we'll see. But they're definitely on it, they've been extremely responsive and so we'll keep working with them on that issue. And then just related to the storm response this weekend, Go Public Works, they were out there just doing what they do. I mean, what a great group of people and staff we have in Public Works. And they were out there all night long and the minute it starts raining, because as you know, currently at the Enzo Pump Station, that is all manual. Eventually, that is going to be something that we will have automated, but it is not currently, so somebody has to be out there all night. We had a team of eight people that came in very early in the morning on Saturday, they were out there clearing drains. They were, there was, you know, some branches that had fallen down, I think some big branch down in like half of them in Valleymar area, so they cleared that out. They were out there working with PD and kudos to PD for helping shut down the freeway so that they could get out there in the Caltrans right away and clear that storm drain in the, under the Manor over crossing. So that was a team effort within the city with PD, so thanks to them for that. Also, over at wastewater, they were manning the pumps down at the Lindemar Pump Station. So again, we had Juan Castro down there, he always does such a great job taking care of that. Maria Aguilar was with her team, making sure that the wastewater plant was continuing to run even though we were having high flows. So that's just kind of a quick overview, but yes, out there in full force.
Have we used the retention basin yet?
There was no use of the retention basin, so that was a good thing. But yeah, we did actually have a lot of staff on the ground. Also, the Rangers were out there as well, so lots of effort on Public Works' part to keep the city safe and running.
I think it's not always the most obvious thing to, at least me as an average citizen, exactly how much work Public Works does do in these sorts of circumstances, also keeping the entirety of our community safe. So thank you for being here to highlight how much work they're doing under storm conditions such as these. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protem. Okay, we're gonna move on to our public, we have no public hearings, but we have some consideration items. Agenda item number 11, which is the 2022 Storm Drainage Master Plan. We have Public Works Director Lisa Peterson and Lawrence Enriquez to present staff report and PowerPoint presentation and we also have consultants from Corolla Engineers who will contribute.
Mayor Protem and council members, Lisa Peterson, Director of Public Works. And with me here tonight to help present this item, we have Lawrence Heinrichs. He is an associate civil engineer in the Public Works Department. He's also the project manager on the city side for this project. We also have Ryan Orgill and Ryan is the project manager from our consultant, Corolla Engineering, and he'll be providing the presentation tonight. We also have Paul Friedlander, who's out in the audience, who will help answer questions as they come up. So tonight, we are recommending that the council adopt the 2022 Storm Drain Master Plan. Just very quickly, council may remember that back in July and also in September, there were study sessions related to the Storm Drain Master Plan that the council heard. At that time, we went through a lot of different issues and items related to the Storm Drain Master Plan. Council asked a lot of questions, asked us to also include additional information, which we did. So we've rolled that all up into this 300-page document. It's very, a lot of information in it, it's a great document, I think. We also did a very robust public outreach on this project, had some pop-up events, did outreach through social media, asking people to tell us where your problems are that you're having related to flooding, related to drainage. And people gave us that information. Corolla was able to take all of that information, also wrap that into this Storm Drain Master Plan. So the master plan, we feel, really is a good representation of what is happening in the city related to drainage issues that we're having. Additionally, it also provides a list of what we believe are very important, you know, storm drain projects, infrastructure projects that we would like to see move forward. And then with that, I'm just gonna pass it over to Ryan to make the presentation.
Thank you, Lisa. So to go through an agenda here, the first part I'd like to discuss is just a quick recap of our previous study sessions. So we've been here remotely twice to go over what we've done. I wanted to recap what the findings of the actual storm drain analysis were, so we're gonna go into the existing and future design storm capacity analysis, quickly recap the preliminary capital improvement cost estimates, do an additional discussion of the funding options that are available to actually construct the projects, and then provide a little bit of background on the report itself.
I'm sorry to ask you this, but can you put the mic just a little closer to you? Thank you so much.
Okay, so the city is embarking to build off the 2012 Storm Drain Master Plan to address several key project objectives. First, we wanted to update and enhance the city's hydraulic model. That was developed originally in 2012 as part of the master plan effort. We wanted to make sure that we're able to serve future growth projected by the city's planning department and the general plan update. One of the key things that was included in this analysis that wasn't included in 2012 was to develop an understanding of climate change and how that will impact your storm drain system. And finally, to develop a prioritized capital improvement plan to identify what projects need to be done and to identify potential funding options in order to actually construct the projects. So in our previous study sessions, Corolla summarized several key project elements. So one of the main things that we did in the previous study sessions was to discuss the flow monitoring program that was conducted in December of last year. We also took that flow monitoring data and built a robust hydraulic model of the system and actually calibrated it against the flow monitoring program that we conducted. We also conducted, as Lisa mentioned, a significant public outreach effort in order to really understand where the happening in the system and to develop projects to mitigate those issues. We talked about the planning and analysis criteria, so there was a lot of discussion about the design storms that we actually simulated within the hydraulic model and the criteria that we use to define what we call a storm drain deficiency. We talked about the climate change assumptions and the analysis that was used to develop existing and current or current and future design storms. So the main impact of climate change on the storm drain system is the intensity of rainfall events that happen in the system and that was what our climate change analysis was primarily focused on. We also talked about the results of the existing system analysis, so those would be the design storm runs and model simulated flooding that occurred during those storm events. We also went through system improvements, so that was our development of our capital improvement project recommendations. So we had three different categories that we looked at and I can get into those a little bit more as we move in here. The actual costs associated with those improvements and then a brief discussion of different mechanisms that can be used to mechanisms that can be used to fund the projects.
Yeah, is it possible to use a different mic?
You have to move the black one over so you don't have to hold it.
Yeah. There you go.
Is that any better? Let's try to yell.
Thank you. It's okay, it's not your fault.
Okay, so moving on from the previous study sessions that we conducted and talking a little bit about the analysis that we performed. So we analyzed both the 10-year and 50-year rainfall events, the hydraulic model, and on this slide, you'll see what those volumes were. So again, we looked at 24-hour duration storms, and we looked at both existing and future conditions. So the existing condition would be what's happening now. The future would be the projection of what nine storms would be century through with, associated with climate change. And so what we found there was that the 10-year storm event would increase by 26% in volume. That's our projection. And under the 50-year event, it would increase by 21%. And one item that I wanted to note here is that while we analyzed the collection, the hydraulic model under the 10- and 50-year events, when you move into the actual pre-design of these projects, as you move forward, there are city options to actually design them around the, the approach that the city would like to take. One of the items that we had to identify in terms of what constitutes a deficiency is the allowable flood depth. So there's different criteria for different storms that we're looking at. For the 10-year event, you want to have the machinum hydraulic grade line, which basically means the level of water in the manhole. Up to five, half a foot below the inlet grades, or one foot below the manhole cover. And under the 50-year event, you're, we're allowing flooding up to 70, seven inches within the street. So the hydraulic model was run with the existing 10-year, 24-hour event, and we noted some areas within the system that are shown in red here that violated the criteria, red and purple that violated the criteria established. We also looked at the 50-year event and noted some additional areas that popped up as deficiencies. And we also run the model under the future design storm condition with climate change, so that was the 26% and 21% increase that I noted below. And I did add a note to this table here that reiterates what I just said about, as the city moves into pre-design of these projects, they can choose to upsize the projects to handle storm event as appropriate. So moving into the actual projects that we have identified, we have developed planning-level capacity improvements for several areas with flooding and ongoing areas of concern. So the first project that we've identified is a carryover from the previous master plan, and it's this lower Lindemar improvement. The concept here is that she would construct an additional storm drain line that will be a relief line on Lindemar Boulevard that will mitigate the flooding issues that you're seeing down by the Lindemar Shopping Center area. Another major project was Monterey Road. So for this project, there was significant flooding that occurred last year in the October event. And the, there's two different concepts that we looked at for that project. Number one would be developing a new storm drain line on Monterey Road to shave off some of those flows before they go into Big Inch Creek and thereby mitigate the flooding issues that you're seeing. The other option would be to actually install a storm drain pipeline within Big Inch Creek, as was, has been done in other creeks within the city. I think that these projects, in terms of the overall costs, are fairly similar, and the ultimate decision on which alternative that she would be, would be determined during pre-design. We also developed a project from Sharp Park. This one, again, is a carryover from the previous master plan. So the issue that happens here is that there's significant flooding that happens near Clarendon Lakeside, and there is a, there is a maintenance issue that happens there where the city has to go out with portable pumps every time it rains. And so the solution to that would be to build and construct a new pump station and outfall to actually mitigate that issue and not have to be sending city staff out there every time it rains. The hydraulic model also indicated that there was flooding in the Edgemar area, near Oroyo and Edgemar, and that's partially due to an undersized main that's going into Malaga Creek there. So the recommendation there would be to take that existing pipeline and upsize it to a 24-inch. There's also a significant area upstream of that, of that improvement that does not have storm drain pipelines currently, so the recommendation there would be to install additional storm drain lines to more efficiently convey that water rather than having it flow over. Storm drain pipeline down to Malag, down to the, which is a 24-inch. We also got a lot of feedback on the Rockaway Beach Avenue area, so there was, there's nuisance flows there that occurred due to spring. And the solution for that one would be to construct a new inlet and new pipeline to take it to nearby. On Madera Drive, the hydraulic model indicated that there would be flooding there during larger storm events, so things that are 50-year storm events and above. The recommendation there is to simply upsize the existing pipeline. I think it's a 20-inch that we are recommending be installed, upgraded to a 30-inch. Finally, city staff noted that there aren't any storm drain lines within the Lauren Avenue area currently, and the recommendation there would be in the future to consider actually installing a storm drain line there in order to more efficiently get storm drain runoff within that street. So we took all of those improvements and prioritized them into three major categories. So the first category was projects to mitigate severe flooding under the 10- and 50-year storms. Not surprisingly, these include the lower Lindemar area, as well as the Monterey Project and Sharp Park. Category two is also to mitigate flooding under 10-year and 50-year design storm events, but the severity of the flooding there is somewhat less than category one, so we categorize those as a category two improvement, or improvement. Category three projects were to address model simulating flooding that may not have necessarily historically been observed, and those would be Madera primarily, the nuisance water, which would be Rockaway Beach, and to extend storm drain infrastructure to unserved areas, which would be Lauren. One thing I will note about Rockaway Beach is we do understand that there's going to be a sewer project implemented on the street in the near future. And so there, there would most certainly be cost savings if you were to move that up in the priorities to coincide with that, that sewer line. That's something to consider. In terms of the planning level costs, Corolla contracted with Friar and Loretta, a local engineering firm, to develop planning-level cost estimates for the proposed improvements. And those are considered Class IV cost estimates, as defined by AACE, with an expected accuracy range of negative 30 to plus 50%. So those are master plan level cost estimates. Again, we, we costed out each project individually and categorized it in the category one, two, three improvements. So you'll see the largest, the most, the category one improvements are pretty significant costs. Lower Lindemar, we estimated at 5.2. Monterey Road at 6.9, and Sharp Park at 6. Edgemar, as well, is a fairly significant project. And then the category three improvements are somewhat lower. So Lauren Avenue would be the expensive of those three, followed by Rockaway Beach and Madera. When we summarize these capital costs by category, we get category one is, totals $18.1 million. Category two is $5 million, and category three is 2.4, for a total of $25.5 million. So those are pretty big numbers for a city that doesn't have a current funding mechanism for storm drain projects. So part of the scope of this project included a high-level analysis of different funding options to actually build the projects. So based off of our study or analysis, there are two main approaches used to fund stormwater projects, and we discussed this at our last council study session. The first would be grants and loans, and the second would be the development of this stormwater utility or an actual, that would be charged to customers to fund the projects. So Corolla researched several state and federal grant loan opportunities for stormwater projects. So there, there's some tables here and some, and some logos associated with the different agencies that we conducted this research for. The long and short of it is, is that these, these grant and loan opportunities are heavily weighted towards disadvantaged communities. For the City of Pacifica, that does not necessarily bode very well. The other main takeaway that we had for the grant funding opportunities is that if there is some level of design for the project, so maybe 10%, 50% design, they tend to view that more favor. There's not really much you can do about the disadvantaged community part of it, but in order to maximize your potential to get grant and loan, loans from these different agencies, having some level of design is preferred and will put you in a better position to. The other option is the development of a stormwater utility, and that is a potential method of funding the master plan recommendations. So essentially, what that means is a rate that your customers would pay, and types of rates that they would pay really are typically either based off of EDUs or the amount of impervious surface for a specific customer. But this is a, this is another way of doing it. It's a, I would say, a more stable source of revenue, and the big question is whether or not there's a, there's an appetite with your ratepayers to actually take on that stormwater utility or that rate per month. And we, we show some examples of where this has been implemented in communities in the, in the area. So a couple in the City of Palo Alto and the County of San Mateo. Moving on into the actual master plan report itself. So the Storm Drain Master Plan report documents the work that has been discussed in the previous city council study sessions. So we've taken all of the information that we distilled here into a couple of slideshow presentations into a, into a fairly robust technical report that is available for review. That'll include not only the maps that show where the projects are, but we have these detail maps in an appendix that actually show the fine-tuned details of each project and why they're needed, and the cost, and all those, those sorts of details. The current status of the master plan report is that it's a final draft document and is ready to be finalized. The action of the city staff and the council. That, I think we can turn it over to questions.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate your time and efforts here. Do we have any questions from council? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for the report. Well done. I wanted to just circle back to what you were telling us about funding a moment ago. So what I heard you say was that we need to have some level of design for one of these projects if we're to like to stand any chance of going one of these funding routes. Did I hear you right?
That, yes, that is, that would definitely put you in a much better position, especially considering the fact that you don't have the disadvantaged communities.
So between passing this plan and having some level of design created, what sort of time and or money is going to go into getting us, getting that design in our hand that then we can turn that around and hopefully get funded for one of these projects?
Yes, thank you for that question, Mayor Protem. So I think a couple of things to keep in mind here is that the city has been applying for grant funding for some of these storm drain projects. I know that the lower Lindemar one was applied for, I believe, back, I'm not sure of the exact date, but it was, it was in the 2012 master plan. There was an effort to try to get some funding there. We currently have a notice of intent filed, and it's pending review with, for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, or FEMA, and that is also for the lower Lindemar area. We do have some conceptual design that has been put together for that. I agree with what Ryan is saying. Typically, what they, what they say is if you have a shovel-ready project, a project that's ready to go, that they're not going to have to wait for, also environmental, has been completed on it, oftentimes, those projects are prioritized because those projects are, you know, projects that they're not going to have to wait and find out that you can't, you know, you have big issues with trying to get your environmental clearance, or you have big public outwork because they don't want the project or something. So they, that's one of the reasons those are prioritized. These are large projects, though, so, you know, you're talking about a significant amount of money to do a complete design on them and a significant amount of time to get those, you know, those completed. I would say, you know, for a total design, you're probably looking at a year, and also, again, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars probably for the design itself, because, you know, these are multimillion-dollar projects. But we are moving in the right direction. We, you know, do continue to put, to put the effort out there. We do have California Consulting, who is a consulting group that looks specifically for grant funding for us. We were just talking with them today about possible other opportunities. So we do keep, keep searching. Again, I think one of the other things that it does say in the report, as, as, you know, so many of these grants, you know, do go to a lot of disadvantaged communities, that makes the ones that do not go to those that much more competitive. So it's just sort of the state of affairs we're in right now, and wish I could give you better news.
No, but I do want to have the robust understanding. So given that 10 years has passed, that we haven't been able to address, you know, the Lindemar project, for example, and wanting to get anything done in that direction, if what you're telling me is I need a design in my hand, would the next step then be simply putting the design phase onto the CIP list for the coming, whatever that five-year cycle, if not sooner?
Yeah, so I think the council during your, you know, goal-setting session could discuss if this is an area that you would like to try to advance, you know, to try to front-load, let's say, the lower Lindemar project, to try to get that designed and put that funding in place to get the design completed. Again, that would certainly be up to the council to determine how they want their priorities to move forward.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Since I think the majority of all these creeks empty into the ocean, once, is this all going to have to go to the Coastal Commission for approval and permitting?
So the areas that are within the Coastal Commission jurisdictional area, you know, those projects, we do have to go through the CDP process, but those that are outside of it, we have other environmental agencies that we go through and ultimately have to get approval for, but, you know, would not be Coastal Commission.
But ultimately, all these projects, looking at the maps, I would say most of the projects look like they are going to go to the Coastal Commission, correct?
So if we're doing actual work within the Coastal Commission area, and I guess I could look to, you know, Planning Director Murdoch, but my understanding is, is if we're not doing actual infrastructure work within those areas, then, you know, we wouldn't need to get the CDP. So for example, the minute we cross Highway One, then, yes, then we would start having to look at getting Coastal Commission permitting. And, and so there is a portion of the Lindemar, lower Lindemar project that does have a connection in that location. So that area, you know, would require Coastal Commission to look at that.
Now, I know previously, the city managers mentioned the frustration that public projects aren't expedited at the Coastal Commission at all. And I think at one point, you mentioned we were like three years into trying to get, was it the Anza Pump Station or the Lindemar Pump Station? We're still in the process of getting Coastal Commission permission for that? Do I remember correctly?
The, the Anza Pump Station project is, is underway. I, I think each of these projects have slightly different circumstances, that being an emergency project due to the fire. But it, the Beach Boulevard Infrastructure Resiliency Project might, might be an example, complex project. We know that the work with Coastal Commission will take a long time, so you build, and, and all of these projects take a long time for design and then seeking the funding and construction. So you need to build in- seeking the funding and construction. So you need to build in early into the process consultation with the coastal commission because they, they are an understaffed organization. They do take a long time.
Okay, so when we're doing that, we need to look at. Okay. I just wanted to be sure I was correct. Thank you.
Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The questions I have are along the same line as Councilmember O'Neil. And I'm specifically wondering about the Monterey Road project. Monterey Road and Nelson Avenue. And it looks like there are two options potentially of putting in the new storm drain, storm line down Monterey Road or possibly redirecting to Big Inch Creek.
Yeah, and so those two projects basically serve the same purpose. Big issue that you're having is there's a lot of stream areas coming into Big Inch Creek. Which one of those projects would mitigate that? Two in a different way. So the one that goes down Monterey Road would actually take that flow and scalp it off to an Monterey Road. And then the other option that we looked at would be to actually pipe the creek.
Piping the creek, that's right. I remember now from your previous presentation.
Yeah, and so in, in terms of the master plan, at, at this level of detail, I don't think it's, we would be recommending a specific alternative one over the other. But we're, we would carry them forward to be studied more further when you actually go to design them, their advantage and disadvantage.
Well, following on to the issues of regulatory agencies and, and
Exactly, yeah.
Environmental impact and such, is, in your, in your experience, is there?
I would say the Big Inch Creek harder to get approvals. Challenge, maybe, Lacy?
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I, I think that's correct.
Thank you. And then the other question I had is probably for Director Peterson. To your knowledge, or anyone, to your knowledge, is there any possibility of funding through CCG or the county in terms of the studies? The study, you know, the, the to get to the 10% or the 30% readiness level?
Yes, thank you for that question, Councilmember Beckmeyer. I would say that we continue to look for these grant fundings and certainly, I know all our council members have good connections out there, so you can tell them, you know, to give us grants in those areas. It's one of the great things about having California Consulting on board. They've actually just steered us towards a possible couple additional grants that we weren't aware of. So, you know, it's nothing that's on our radar right now, but we do continue to look and will continue to have our granting, our grant consultant helping us look and do the research on that as well.
I have a question about Rockaway. I know you said it would be important for us to, to make sure that we did the work around the same time that they're doing the sewerage, the sewer project. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
Yeah, the, the advantage there is if you're tearing up the road, you can do some cost savings by doing that project at the same time.
And do we have a way of, of being in contact with the people that are going to be doing that work? Like, are we able to part, partner and have like open lines of communication with them or?
Yeah, yes. Thank you, Mayor Beer. Yes, absolutely. We have somebody on our staff, Nelson Slater, who's actually doing that work. So we're, we've already been in touch with him. We've been in contact with him. He actually helped with Corolla showing them the location that, that the sewer upgrades were going to be happening in. So we've already been coordinating with our wastewater on that.
Okay, thank you so much. Do we have any other questions from council?
Follow on to your question, Mayor. In, in regard to collaborating our sewer, sewer line and our storm drain line, can we work in paving the road?
Yes, so one of the things that we would definitely be doing with that project, obviously if we're cutting up the road substantially, we would also be looking at, you know, doing some sort of rehabilitation to the pavement in that area. So that was sort of this combination idea that there's a lot of issues out there, wrapping them into one project and sort of taking care of all those issues at one time.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. All right, then we're going to go ahead and open up public comment. I know it's been up on the screen for a little while, but if you want to call in, please do. 650-898-6965. Conference ID is 383609442. Please press star five to raise your hand and star six to unmute. And remember to mute any background sound and listen through your phone. Do we have anyone? We have no cards, no one on the phone. Okay, then we're going to close public comment and bring it back to council. Mayor Protem.
Since I don't see anyone chomping at the bit to discuss further, I will move to adopt the resolution of the city council of the city of Pacifica adopting the city of Pacifica 2022 Storm Drainage Master Plan.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Bigstick, seconded by Councilmember O'Neil. That vote passes five to zero.
Thank you so much for all of your work on that.
Thank you for the details.
I need five, I need five minutes.
Everybody, it was a pleasure.
Thank you.
I need five minutes, yeah.
I need five minutes too. Or one.
Hold on, I guess there's a line in the women's bathroom.
Yes?
I think they're everybody back.
They're
They're gender
They're gendered, you're troglodytes.
Do you need more money or?
No, that's Thank you. It's just
Feasibility analysis and the next steps. We have Julia Carter, Assistant City Manager here to present the staff report and PowerPoint with input from consultants from Wildan and Financial Services. Hello, thank you for being with us. Hi, Julia.
Mayor Beer, I'll, I'll go ahead and just kick it off and then quickly turn it over to the team, Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I want to, as you just mentioned, Ms. Carter, Assistant City Manager, is here, as well as James Edison from Wildan Financial Services. For this project, and, and they'll cover a bit of the, the history to it. The, the city went out for RFP to select a consultant to do this high-level overview of the feasibility of this, this concept. And as, as council remembers, Councilmember O'Neil brought up this partnership idea during the Civic Center campus discussions to proactively look, oftentimes, public-private partnerships can take many, many years. So to proactively look, what are the, what are the facility needs that the city has? What are the facility needs that the school district has? Not to speak for them, but just thinking objectively about it. And the idea about the Corporation Yard site on Malagra and the school district headquarters on Reyna del Mar came up. And that launched the goal, working with the school district, to do this high-level feasibility study. And tonight, we're here to present the results of that and hear from the council, get direction on next steps. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to James.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. City manager indicated, I'm James Edison from Wildan Financial Services. I'm going to give you a brief overview of our analysis. I think you also have received the memo we prepared. So I'll give you a sort of an overview and then I'm happy to answer any questions or discussion. So just in terms of the sort of big picture, not to be prescriptive, it's sort of our understanding of what the mission was. The idea basically is, as the city manager indicated, you've got two parcels, a school district parcel, the city parcel. The idea is to redevelop the city parcel as housing and also and goes, all right. And accommodate the school district offices and then have the school district site, which currently has their corp yard as well as their offices, be a site for Public Works as well as the corp yard, a joint corp yard, corp yard essentially for the city and the district. That's really the sort of overall picture. And just to sort of get, head ourselves a little bit, you know, our, our conclusions are that roughly it seems feasible. I mean, it's conceptually feasible, but there's a lot of details. There's a lot of challenges and site constraints. We'll go through some of those. But then our recommendation is also going further, it's going to require some additional analysis, especially of exactly what facility requirements are. And anyway, I'll get to that a little later. I'll walk you through our analysis first. So just first, as a sort of context of where real estate development is at the moment, things are a little crazy, actually, because of COVID. I mean, even before COVID, there were skyrocketing construction costs, mostly from labor. Since COVID, you've seen big increases in cost of materials. And I think you've heard that, you know, it's not just in, in real estate, in all areas of the economy, you've got problems with supply chains. If you want an iPhone right now, you got to wait for a month, right? Which, you know, it's, it's happening all over the place. In addition, and that's on the cost side, then on the revenue side, I think you all know that on, in terms of residential real estate, since, especially since the interest rate increases, things have declined or stagnated. So all that put together means that basically, single-family product is still roughly feasible, but that's pretty low density. Multi-family market rate is basically at a standstill. And in California, there's no, I mean, there are some projects in, in very expensive markets, places like San Francisco, or things that are already in progress where they've already committed their financing, they're going to go, they're going to finish. But in terms of sort of new projects, we're seeing that in other PPP projects we're working on for other cities as well, where they're dealing with product types. And they're getting a lot of pushback from developers on doing multi-family because they just don't see it. That doesn't mean that's the case forever, but right now, that's the sort of current balance of things. And then finally, multi-family affordable is actually still feasible. And the main reason for that is because, as many probably know, the way it works when you're doing market rate development is you have to figure out what you can sell the houses for or rent them for. And you back out of that what it costs you to build, what it costs you for all the consultants, it would cost you for the land, and you have to come out positive or else you're not going to do it. Affordable housing is a little different because there, they really have a target of providing the housing. And then based on the cost of that housing, they go out to get the subsidies. So it's sort of a backwards, exactly, but it's a different way of looking at it. It does mean that they need more subsidy per unit, so they can produce for units, but it doesn't make the project itself feasible. And that's, that's reflected in the conversations we had with affordable housing developers. I mean, they, you know, they feasible site in kind of a general way. So just to talk about the two sites just briefly, first, the, the city site, the corp yard site on, on Malagra, it's about three quarters of an acre. Currently, the Public Works offices and Corporation Yard are there. The Public Works offices are about 14,000 square feet. The operations there are very constrained. You can probably see it, if you drive by, you can see that the vehicles all parked like jammed together. I don't know how anybody gets in and out of the, in and out of the vehicles, probably a lot of squirming. And, and, and also some functions like material storage or offsite. And also there's some vehicles that are stored out in the open that really shouldn't be. That's my, our understanding from Public Works, all sort of constraints that, you know, you can get by with. I mean, they are now, but are not ideal for, for how you And then the location itself, and one of the things we looked at that's actually in our memo, but not here, is we looked at something called walk score, which is a, is a measure of a site and how close you can get to services and transit by walking. The walk score of this site's about 81, which is not bad, actually. I mean, it's, it's, that, that means that, you know, someone who lives there, who doesn't have regular access to a car, can do a lot of their daily needs by walking to, you know, and I don't know what the exact services are, but there's transit and daily stuff. It's a pretty good site for that, which makes it a positive place for something like affordable housing, which are folks which, they may have one car, but they don't have two or three for a household. And so that's a very useful And then the school district site on Reyna del Mar, which I'm sure you're also familiar with, that's much larger, about 1.6 acres. School district offices are there. If you look at that site, you can see the sort of lower part of that is where the school district offices are. And then the, the upper part is where there's sort of a corp yard and a larger building there. In addition, that site gets used by, it's adjacent to the elementary school, you can see to the east there. And the site itself is used for drop-off and pickup. So actually certain for, you know, at the beginning of the day and the end of the day, their parking lot gets basically full of vehicles picking up and dropping off children. And then finally, the, the road along the western edge of the site, you can see the police station, the quarters above there, they use that road for access. That's another potential constraint. So then we looked a bit at sort of development alternatives. One, and this is for the city site, because that's really the one that's going to get sort of transformed and redeveloped. You know, what happens to the, 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 the school district site will depend in part on a lot of programmatic considerations and how much funding you have and, you know, find decision, a lot of design decisions to make. So for market rate development, first of all, for townhomes, you probably could do that right now. You get many units and they'd be market rate. And it doesn't seem like that's really, that really aligns with the objectives of the council, but just as sort of one of your options, I mean, that's, that's something you could do there. In fact, it's even possible to make some of them affordable. I mean, that's, that's dumb in some places where you, you have, you know, you build eight or 10 units. Couple of them be affordable, but that's a pretty small solution, given the commitment of this, in my opinion, the commitment of the resources of the city, but of my pay grade to make that decision. Market rate development for multi-family currently appears infeasible. I did get some feedback that really large projects are still feasible, like tens of acres, maybe, but we're nowhere near anything like this. It's very, very small scale. It does look like, based on the, the size of the site, that it could accommodate a ground floor district office. Parking is a challenge. Right now, my understanding is that Public Works pretty much parks on the street. And if you included parking on site, that would then either require something like a podium, which would make it a lot more expensive for parking, or you'd have to set aside some of the surface parking for, some, some of the surface for parking, which then would limit the number of units. That's a sort of trade-off there. And that's really one of the kinds of things that's going to require some further analysis, maybe a fit analysis, to really understand what those trade-offs are. Because it's, it's going to end up being sort of a range of options and decisions at the end of the day. This initial analysis is really intended to sort of lay out what the, what the sort of broad issues are and, and the flavor of those. And then you can give staff further direction on how to proceed. And finally, for affordable development, the two developers, two developers I talked to both said, you know, three quarters of an acre is just barely enough. Their main concern these days is that they have to have a large enough project for not only to be, to make sense to build, but also make sense to manage. Because they actually have to manage the building and the renters and have someone on site. And in order to do that effectively and efficiently, there has to be a certain number of units for them. You know, 10-unit buildings, it's just not practical for them to manage things that size. And then again, with affordable development, parking is an issue. It's the same trade-off. Either you have surface parking where you're taking away units or you're building structure parking. And that's also an issue potentially because you also have the district office there, right? And how much parking they need. And to which it can be accommodated on site or people can park off-site. That's all, again, sort of things for, for further consideration, but things that are going to result in a kind of a trade-off between design and meeting your program objectives and, and finding something that, that sort of works for both the district and, and city as well. Let me just say, the city's been very cooperative. I mean, they were super open, but obviously they haven't committed anything, right? But in terms of sort of discussing ideas and, and their constraints, you know, they've been very forthcoming. It's a very helpful discussion. We've met with them a couple. So practical issues, I mentioned the construction costs already. Our expectation is that, that construction costs will come back into some kind of equilibrium. I mean, the, the effects of COVID are still sort of rippling out. You know, the office market right now has a lot of phantom space that's, that's leased, that's not getting used. There's a lot, there's a lot of changes in how people commute and where they work, where they go back to the office. There's lots of things sort of still in flux. So we expect there will be some kind of equilibrium. What that looks like exactly is hard to say, and it'll certainly probably take years. But we're trying to give you a sense of, of where things are now. So in terms of site constraints, the city site, as I mentioned, is a little small for what's contemplated. It's possible, but it's, it's tight. On the district site, operations is mainly a reference to that pickup and drop-off issue. And that'll, I think, require some stakeholder input on sort of how to manage that and how any changes are made when you, when it's a site more intensively, honestly, when you have a corp yard as well as public works offices. Parking, we mentioned before. And one particular issue, actually, we were just talking about storm drain earlier, weren't we? There's a storm drain, a large one, 54 inches, although I think on the map of, of the master plan, it looked like it said 46 inches. But either way, it's a big pipe. It's going pretty much east to west under the, basically the middle of the site. Generally, my understanding, and I think Public Works confirmed that, you really can't build over something like that. You need to leave it open for clearance and access and repair and whatever else. Which means you either need to leave that space on the site open, so no building, or you, or you have to reroute it, which is also a big challenge. That's, again, sort of a, a matter of needing to do some analysis of the site, what we call a fit analysis, to figure out sort of how to make that work. Because you may want some surface parking anyway, so maybe it can go there. I mean, there's possibilities, but But just to understand what this.
Where on, I don't think I've seen, seen any sort of map as to where that pipe is on the site.
Right. It's, it's, my understanding is roughly, if you look at the site here, you see it's sort of a, it's sort of a stunted L. It's pretty much going left to right above where that square is. That square is the public works offices. My understanding is it's, it's basically coming off of a, that it's going, it's going straight across at the sort of base, just above, say, just north of that building, and then going towards the freeway or towards Highway one and then under and out, my understanding of the location.
Yeah. And Councilmember O'Neill, to add to that, on that picture there, you can see to the east, the sort of strip of trees, that riparian corridor, that's the creek. And then it goes underground and it goes through the parking lot behind the fire station and then through the parking area behind the public works office.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to see that.
Yeah, of course, of course. So then, and something that was identified by all the developers I talked to was a concern about the corp yard and environmental issues. But then that's just a red flag, right? They don't know what's there, but they definitely want, I mean, one piece of, I think, a way to make a PPP easier and to make development easier is to limit a certain, the less uncertainty there is, the better developer can sort of make a bid and commit to construction and commit to costs and commit to prices. And so they would expect or at least hope for some level of environmental clearance where you really understood what had gone on and what was currently on the, the city site.
How much would that, for lack of a better word, tox- toxicity study cost to look at that? Because there was a car dealership before the city bought it as a corporation yard.
Mike, I'm not sure if people are hearing you.
Oh.
Sorry. Do you have any idea as to how much it would cost to get that studied? Because there was a car dealership prior to the city owning it, you know, to see, to get that toxicity or whatever you want to call it?
Yeah, I'm afraid I don't. That's not something I looked at, is what it would cost to do it. I mean, typically, it's got several stages. First, you do an evaluation of actually how the site was used to sort of look for red flags. And then you do some sampling. Depending what the sampling finds, you may do, mean to do more sampling. But it's, it's not my area of expertise. And honestly, it's probably something I should have looked into, but I did not, I didn't research that particular issue.
Yeah, and I could add to that. I mean, one of the future phases of research would be perhaps the phase one was done when it, when the city did take on the property from the car dealership. Hopefully, that was done. But, you know, you, you could search the records where there are underground storage tanks on the site related to the car dealership. And then if you have to move into phase two and actually do drilling and sampling, then you get more expensive there. But the phase one work is more of a paperwork research, and we haven't done that, that yet. But it wouldn't, you know, I don't want to attempt to put a dollar amount on it, but it's the less expensive phase.
And then finally, on sort of zoning and planning and legal constraints, one is its current zoning of the city site, I think, is 35 feet. It's a maximum. I think you, in order to get the density of 50 units or so, you're gonna need more than that. There's a bit more of that in my memo, and I think also some, some planning folks would have more to share as we move along further. But the basic idea is you're gonna need to make a modification to what's allowed there right now in order to accommodate the kinds of scale that's gonna make sense to redevelop that site. And then finally, Calera Creek, which is north end of the district site. My understanding is your sort of current policy is that within 100 feet of that creek, how that 100 feet's defined exactly, I don't know. But within 100 feet, you, there are limitations on what can get constructed and built. And that is another kind of constraint to explore about what exactly you can do with the site in terms of leaving buildings, remodeling buildings, expanding, sort of things like that. That's another, sort of another piece of the puzzle, if you will. And finally, to talk about next steps, we just sort of identified some things we, we saw as things that you're gonna need to consider to proceed, this thing called a fit study. And that's really having, hiring someone like an architect, look at the city site and sort of do some understanding, given the site constraints and your objectives, of what you could put there. And that could be both in terms of unit sizes, how many units, how tall it has to be, the type of construction, parking, and also parking standards. That would be sort of a draft analysis. And actually, you could also do a little bit of iteration. We could say, well, okay, you're assuming one parking space, we actually need one and a half per unit. How could we make that work? You can sort of work out what your, what your site constraints are in terms of what can get, what can get built there, to get a better idea, especially this issue of the, of the storm drain and how that's gonna affect what you can plan there. The second is that, you know, at the moment, the sort of exact requirements of the, of the city and the district are not pinned down, you know. And so it's a matter of, I think, figuring out not only their current needs, but maybe planning a little bit for future needs and finding what, you know, what site can accommodate. That's mostly about a discussion. And that internal feed, that, that internal feedback can forklift the design of the, of the housing development, because, you know, the district's requirements, you know, they basically said what they need to do is replace their current space, which is about 11,000 square feet. We think too, you'll need to do some stakeholder outreach, especially regarding the pickup and drop off. I mean, I had elementary school kids not that long ago. I'm sure I would have an opinion. And that's a matter of, you know, having conversations. And then finally, you will, given the complexity, you'll probably want to identify a development partner as opposed to putting out a RFQ for whoever's interested, given all the, given the complexities. But that's really up to you, and that's sort of further down the road. Because I think they, they'd have a lot of questions you'd probably want to answer beforehand, you know, do some work and figure out your requirements and do some of the environmental, at least the level one, the, the. So, I mean, in terms of timeline, sort of rough estimate to get to where you'd be ready to make some kind of decision about how to proceed, we, we think two to three years is what it'll take really to sort all this out and have the conversations and figure things out. I mean, it could be faster, but it could also be longer. And some of it could be the, the economic factors I mentioned, which really need to sort themselves out. Or I think it would make some sense to let those settle before you see to, you know, owing, you know, hard money, as they say, you know, really execute a project. So that's the end of my, my remarks. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Do you have any questions from council?
One of the items in the report said that you haven't really discussed this with the school district yet, your report. So I think that's a big factor. Do they have any input on this right now?
You know, my, they were involved in the meetings. You know, we met with them, they gave me information. So they're certainly aware of it. And, you know, they, I think their general attitude was they were open to it. They think it's generally a good idea. It makes sense. I think they shared the concern about the access to the, to the site, the district site. They certainly were interested in, they seemed to like the idea of the, of the district offices being location that seemed appealing to them, although I, I mean, I don't want to speak for them. But basically, I think the idea is that they were, they were open to co-op, to cooperating with the city. They think it in principle makes sense. And, you know, they completely agree that there's a lot of details to work out.
Yeah. And if I could add to that response, so in the, in the early discussions about this, there were two trustees from the school district that were involved in those conversations along with Councilmember O'Neill and Mayor Beer, as well as the superintendent from the school district and myself. You'll notice in the report that whatever the council's direction is regarding next steps, I'm recommending that it be contingent on the Pacifica School District Superintendent getting direction from her board that they're interested in this next step.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And it seems like there have been certain public-private partnership projects brought to our attention that took upwards of 10 years. So when you say two to three years within context, that doesn't necessarily look like the longest timeframe. So thank you. I had asked staff ahead of time, from staff perspective, just in terms of parking and the Calera Creek on the other property, appreciating fully that all these studies that are being recommended would actually tell us at the end of the day how we would adjust for these. But I kind of wanted a high level overview of what possible parking approaches might be if we were to do the Malagra site, to be able to enable us to use that site for affordable housing. And likewise, how we might adapt for that 100-foot range from the creek on the school district site. And again, just high level, first thought kind of ideas before getting to actual analysis down the road later.
Mayor Protem, big stick. So your question is about options for addressing parking at the Malagra site potentially, and then about the 100-foot setback at the Reyna Del Mar? Is that, is that where you're at?
Correct. And the reason I was asking those questions this far out away from actual studies is just to see if, you know, just low hanging fruit type solutions immediately sprung to mind in the pertinent staff's conceptions, how these might be dealt with before we go too far down the road. And I just wanted to see if there were some initial thoughts. And I see our planning directors standing up.
Yeah, I, I think Mr. Murdock could come up and elaborate a bit. But during the project approval process, the, the council could consider parking exceptions, maybe specific ones or standards that relate to affordable housing projects. And I'll have Mr. Murdoch elaborate on that.
Thank you, City Manager Woodhouse. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members, Planning Director Christian Murdock. So for a project like this, particularly where the city is the landowner and has a strong interest in supporting affordable housing, it's not uncommon for the city to actually take very specific land use actions, up to and including amending the zoning regulations, for instance, as they relate to parking, to ensure that the regulations apply to a project like this, specifically a high proportion or exclusively affordable housing project, to make sure that those parking standards are not unduly burdensome to the future project. So for instance, that could mean reducing the parking standard for bona fide affordable housing units. Additionally, there are state laws that regulate the maximum amount of parking that might be attributed to a affordable housing project. The density bonus law is one of those examples where zoning waivers or concessions might be granted, including parking standards. So there are a range of options that, depending on the particulars of the, the project that's ultimately conceived, the city council could take, you know, one or more actions to address parking, height or other zoning type regulations that might affect the feasibility of this particular project.
Thank you very much. And as to the Calera Creek on the school district site, just, you know, at a glance, because that's all we have to work with right now, but at a glance, with that 100-foot buffer seemed to be constraining in terms of what the city would have in mind in terms of using their site as a corporation yard.
The simple answer is it potentially could. And so the policy you're alluding to is in the 2040 general plan. It calls generally for a 100-foot setback from creeks. The logic being, you know, stepping back from those creeks will help preserve the creek banks and improve water quality and all of the natural riparian habitat that benefits the quality of that creek space. That 100-foot distance does encroach some distance into the current corporation yard for the school district. And so it could affect the project in the future that involves significant redevelopment of that area. I think it's unlikely, as the policy is, is written now, to really have a direct impact on maintaining or improving the existing building that's in that footprint. With that said, the disclaimer is that might be the case that at some point, depending when this project takes place, the city might implement more specific ordinance requirements with respect to the creek setback. It's not, you know, something that I could conceive happening over the five to 10-year horizon, for example, this type of project. And that could include more particulars that would affect feasibility in that instance.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any other questions from council? Mike?
Okay. So in the staff report, it said we had three quarters of an acre is the present corporation site, right? And that the school district needs 11,000. And by Googling how many square feet are in a three quarters of an acre, that leaves 21,000 square feet, right? So of first floor. Granted, some of it would have to be used for driveways, possibly parking or whatever. But that gives an option for the city to actually meet some other critical needs such as childcare center, like in Redwood, was it Redwood City? We saw the affordable housing and they had a huge daycare program there. And, and so, or possibly a council chambers when this is sold at some point, whatever, you know. So I just wanted to be sure to articulate that there are, there is more than the 11,000 square feet there. I also called and got some guidance from Samhail County today regarding Section 8 housing. And they would be very interested in family housing, because they get a lot of projects for seniors, but that the Section 8 would almost, their Section 8, obviously, they have to know the details, but the Section 8 would actually bring it almost to, with the subsidy, bring it up to market rate in terms of paying for the project to whatever developer we use. And I also mentioned to her the idea, and I sent a link to the city manager of a, of a project where it's a firehouse on the bottom and senior housing on top. And there was a financing mechanism they used there. So I said, so that is another option, is to look at the totality of the city project. And that the county, you know, she says, now, again, she's, you know, I'm not trying to say this is a done deal, but that there is a possibility they would even help with some of the infrastructure for the firehouse if we were to replace it, because it would be shared facilities, foundations, utility rooms, electrical rooms, et cetera, et cetera. So I think it would be good if we did look at this, is that we look at the totality, totality of firehouse and corporation yard. I think also, which gives you more flexibility, because that would be the majority of the block, I would think, pretty close to the majority. And that would help take care of that 54-inch main underneath. I think you also need to look at the fact that some of the equipment that the corporation yard has is big equipment. And maybe that could be stored behind the Lindemar Fire Station. Okay, because, I mean, there's big equipment there, and maybe even the school district has equipment that might be, you know, could go down there also. And I think what I'm hoping to see with this down the road is that maybe we get into some sort of joint agreements in regards to corporation yards, that maybe if instead of four or five long mores, we only need three, okay? Because, or, you know, we're in the, at lunch, we're cooking senior meals, but in the morning, the school district's cooking kids' meals to be shipped out to the schools. Maybe we could have a shared kitchen at the community center or something to look at greater efficiencies to the taxpayer down the road. And you could have, you could each have your own separate employees go in and do the different things. But I think this is an opportunity for both governmental entities to save some money at the taxpayers and give, and I think this would be an opportune time for us to study this, because we are going all likelihood a recession next year, where some of the materials and housing demand is going down, housing sales going down, where you might actually see a decrease in some of the costs of materials, that hopefully, if the council proceeds with this, we would be looking at the end of next year, when all, a lot of the information is gathered, to make a final decision at some point. So that's my thoughts.
Before you go on, Mike, I thought maybe we should open up public comment?
Yeah.
Because I don't want to go into deliberation without doing.
Well, I wasn't going to liberation. I was just, I was just asking questions and saying my thoughts, yeah.
All right. Do we have any public comment? I don't see any cards from the audience. Give folks a moment to call in. Okay. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council, and then you can go ahead.
Oh, well, I just was, you know, I, I just wanted to emphasize that I think you need to look, you know, at the total block there. And then, and we have talked about that firehouse needs some upgrades or replacements, that this might be an opportunity to actually make that and see if that would be a cost saving thing. Okay? I mean, we did hear that project in Belmont, they got $8 million from the county to build affordable housing. Okay, so I think we should look at that, because I don't know of any money that they've really, the county has given Pacifica for affordable housing. Okay? And I think this is an opportunity for us to get, and maybe if you go five stories, why not go six? Okay? And I think I would, I would really like to see. And I think I would, I would really like to see family housing because we have four senior housing projects in Pacifica, none for families. And if we have daycare at the bottom, that is a critical need of our city also.
Yeah. Thank you, Mike, for, like, thinking outside the box and bringing this forward, you know, involving the school district who, who you care deeply about, so it's really showing how much you care not only about our city but about the school district. I just wanted to let you know, I really appreciate that so much, and this is like out-of-the-box thinking, and so I appreciate your high-level overview. And City Manager, I think I want to know exactly what you need feedback. Like, how, how can I steer that conversation?
Yeah, certainly. Thank you, Mayor. So the recommended next step is to do what's called a FIT study. That would be a, depending on the variables, potentially $5,000 to $10,000 study, architect or similar professional, to really look at the site constraints because that, that will tell us a lot and it will inform affordable housing developers a lot about the potential for the site. And if the council is, if, if there's something here and the council is interested in pursuing this further, that's what we would recommend, and then, as I mentioned before, we would just want to get the, the high-level okay from the district superintendent that they're supportive of that. Council could go whichever way you prefer to go. I guess my presumption was that the city would be funding that next FIT study as well. So direction about that would be very helpful. Is it, is it a go to do that? We can figure out, you know, the timing that would, would be appropriate and, and talking with the school district as well. You know, the, the alternative action mentioned in the report is that, you know, the second phase of this assess, assessment is not currently in the city council's priorities. The council could choose to talk about it at goal-setting, whether to prioritize that or not. Additionally, I do think we should talk a little bit about the firehouse because I know Mr. Edison has some experience with, with fire stations in California. Just want to gauge, you know, we're not suggesting that anything's off the table, but that might be a pretty high bar. I know just some of the basic components of that are fire stations because of their regulatory requirements are very, very expensive buildings to build. I know that the example that, that council member O'Neal sent was in, in, where was it, Maryland?
Delaware.
Delaware. It was in Delaware, but it was like a 10-story-high building, so the economies of building are different, the regulations may be different as well. So I'm not saying that, you know, we wouldn't want to explore that, but there might be some very practical components to, related to incorporating the fire station that we would want to make a quick judgment about whether to spend money on evaluating that or not. Certainly, any space, the, the affordable housing developers are looking and maximizing as much space as possible for the units, and then Mr. Edison also does have information or experience with, with the family housing component, too, so.
Right. So, I mean, a couple of points. One, on the, on the family housing issue, one of the things the affordable housing developers did tell me was that that's actually a very positive, in terms of the competition to get funding, there's a lot of interest from, say, for example, county in family housing, and I think it's exactly right that there's a, there's a lot of other types of housing and there's a perceived shortage in, you know, two-bedroom, three-bedrooms, even four-bedroom units. There's not, not a lot of that's provided, and so that would be advantageous. There is a, there is a sort of a trade-off, though, because if you have larger units, you can't have as many units in a given building envelope, right? So that's part, again, of the sort of the FIT study and understanding how these, how these pieces all fit together. Then on the topic of the, the fire station, and we do actually do a lot of fire station work sort of indirectly because we do impact fee programs all over the state and all over the country, you know, and we're probably doing about 20 of them. Fire stations are extremely complex and really, really expensive, like $1,000 a foot to build. A lot of that has to do with the equipment that's in them, and a lot has to do with the seismic safety standards and the, what they have to get built to. I've never heard of a proposal to put a fire station underneath any other structure. My hunch is the, the fire chief would have some qualms about something over his fire or her fire station in the event of some kind of emergency. And, and again, the city manager said not to take everything, anything off the table, but I can tell you, a fire station here, the fire station, I think, in Delaware was $4 million. I mean, here, it's minimum $10 million, and it could be $50,000 just for the station. And, and again, I don't, it's something we can explore, but it's, it's, I think you'd want to also check with the fire chief about how they feel about having their fire station underneath a, a large residential structure. That's, you know, that's my sort of view of it. It seems to me like the advantage you'd get from having a bigger parcel would be, at, at best, a direct trade-off to the complexity and expense of building a new fire station. On the other hand, if you need a new fire station anyway, and you got the money lined up to do it, and you want to save some money and combine, I mean, that makes sense, but to, to build a, a new one is, we're always, everyone's always shocked how much fire stations cost, even though we see it all the time.
Well, I appreciate having such a qualified consultant. You know a lot about all the things that we're talking about, so I appreciate that. Does anybody else have any comments or questions?
In order to make this at all feasible, we would definitely have to raise the height limit of the building. We, we couldn't do it otherwise.
Right.
Because I could keep seeing, you know, okay, the parking, the daycare, the district office, that then you're already over our height limit, so we would definitely, and we, I could see us doing that, raising the height limit there.
Right. That was the question I had, if I may, in regard to, what's your expertise with, with childcare and daycare center-type cost?
I, I, the only thing I know about daycare is they can't afford to pay a lot of rent. I know that from talking to developers, but it's, I think it's exactly right that it's a, I mean, it's in demand all over the country.
Right. And in Pacifica, particularly in the county, we've had a report from FOCs that we're low relative to our, size of our population and projected growth and da-da-da. So it's always a consideration. I'm glad you brought that up, and I would like to know if in the FIT analysis, it would be part of that analysis, or is it, is this too detailed, to tell us about the stories? How many levels? So in terms of feasibility, really, if we're looking at offices and, and childcare, then what are, what would the recommendation be in terms of the number of stories or size?
An important thing to know about construction is that there's sort of two types, there's type five and type one. Type five is basically wood frame, and then type one is either steel or concrete. Generally, and I'm not an architect, but so my sort of layperson's understanding is type five, you know, wood, by standard building code, you get four stories or at most, maybe five stories. That's it. Can't build any higher than that. If you go higher than that, then you need to use type one, which is either concrete or steel, and then your per-square-foot cost goes up a lot. So in order to justify it, you know, you have, typically, you're going to go from five to eight stories. You won't probably go from five to six. That's simplistic, and I think why you need an architect to tell you exactly that, because the other piece of it is you can also add a podium. So one way to sort of add a bit of, say, parking and other things is you might have a concrete podium as your first story and then have four or five, or is it what's called stick above that? But the FIT study would tell you exactly that. I mean, it would be about, because they know all of that and exactly how high everyone is and whether part of it could be taller than another and, and deal with the, the space and the parking. Something else that came up with the affordable housing developers on parking was a, you know, looking at the site and the number of units and stuff, they said probably max one space per unit, plus some parking, some onsite parking for the office and probably a bunch of it off-site. Was their sort of rough guess, right? Not doing analysis, but, you know, to the, to the sort of parking constraints, you know, two, two spaces per unit or something, I think would just be, nominate that, because, you know. The other thing to understand about the affordable housing developers is for them, things like district offices and childcare are not things that they actually can build with the affordable housing subsidy, because it's not affordable housing, it sort of has to fit in the deal a different way. So something I raised with them was maybe a sort of a lease, leaseback in recognition of the land, that they would lease the land, and then for, say, the same amount, you would, they would lease back the space inside, you know, say, the district space, sort of come out even, but they'd have to find some way to pay for it. They can't just sort of throw it in like, like a private developer can, right? Private developer, they've got their pro forma, they've got their financing, they've got a lot of flexibility, you know, once the bank signs off, they can do a lot of things. Affordable housing developers are much more constrained because they're following the law about how the money gets used. And that, again, is not to sort of rule anything out, this is just a matter of all the kinds of constraints in the puzzle you need to fit together of all the people's needs and, and the characteristics of the site and the exact deal, you know, how you can arrange things, and, I guess, next steps are really what's needed.
Thank you.
Yeah, before you go, I, I wanted to say that I absolutely favor going ahead with the FIT study, and I'd certainly like slightly more detail before taking anything off the table, but I, I wanted to say thank you to Mike because without your thought process and wanting to see, you know, we were talking about 8 million for affordable housing, now that's not happened here from the county because there haven't been any affordable housing projects. So it's hard to have the county give us money for what doesn't exist, so because of you, we might actually have 50 units of affordable housing. So thank you for your vision and for bringing us through so that we might take even additional steps past where we have landed tonight.
Oh, thank you, Tiger, but I also wanted to mention is that I, no, this is kind of my picture, is that the district office and, let's say, the daycare could all be on the first floor. I mean, that's 30, I've got 32,000 square feet, you know what I mean? So I think, you know, that doesn't necessarily need to be on the second, but maybe it is better to have all parking and then your pillars, I don't know. That's above my pay grade, you know, so.
Well, I think that's the, the concept of the FIT study, right? To look at what those options might be.
So, I mean, I'm in favor of the FIT study, and I look forward to hearing what the school district board has to say and if they will. And it might be nice to ask them to contribute.
Can you say that again, Mayor Beer?
It might be nice to have, ask the school board if they would be willing to contribute to the FIT study.
I don't think they're in a position to do that because our affordable housing fund has, we can't even buy a dirt lot if it's in our affordable housing fund, so this is exploring, assuming that's where the funds would come from, this is exploring the possibility of having affordable housing, and I think that's kind of a prudent use of the money.
Okay, thank you.
So do you need a motion?
I don't need a motion as long as I just have the, the consensus of the council to move forward and have it, Solson from the school district said she would seek, you know, the direction from her board, board when, when timing is appropriate.
Yeah, I believe we have consensus.
Great. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Yulia.
Thank you.
You were lucky you came to a short meeting.
It's true. You're very lucky. All right, we're going to move on to item number 13, which is the appointment of an ad hoc subcommittee for Pride 2023 event planning. City Manager Kevin Woodhouse will lead us through that.
Thank you, Mayor Beer. I, I don't have a lengthy presentation on this, and as well, I could, you know, rely on Mayor Beer, Councilmember Beckmeyer to chime in. The, the two, Mayor Beer and Councilmember Beckmeyer have worked closely this, this past year with Coastside Pride and other community and business representatives in planning the Pacifica Pride celebrations that occurred in June of 2022, and that work has continued into the fall and winter, debriefing about what went well and what could be improved in that process and expanding upon it, and it's Mayor Beer and Councilmember Beckmeyer's request to form an ad hoc committee because the work that needs to occur between now and planning and, and occurrences for Pride 2023 is a fairly significant lift if the scope of it is going to expand to include a parade and fundraising, et cetera. And so I think the appropriate duration of an ad hoc subcommittee makes sense to formalize the role that you, you have been playing with monthly or, and more frequently, meetings. And then, of course, an ad hoc subcommittee needs, needs to have a finishing time, so it would end sometime after June of 2023, after, after, you know, debriefing how, how that went. And then in the future, perhaps this is subject to maybe council liaisons to a Coastside Pride, Coast Pride and, and community organizations for future Pride events, but the request is for the formation of an ad hoc committee now on that front, and I'll turn it over to the mayor and Councilmember Beckmeyer to add anything.
No, thank you so much. I think you really covered it well. Did you want to add something?
No, I think that's accurate, considering Pride would be June, first week of, weekend of June, everyone note for your calendar, the fourth. Probably some follow-up meetings through the course of the summer in terms of after-action reporting and stuff like that, but, so in terms of a definitive end date, some months after that would be my thinking.
Councilmember Vodilas?
I would like to nominate Mayor Beer and Councilmember Beckmeyer to serve on the ad hoc committee.
Councilmember Vodilas, we need to open up public comment first, I believe.
Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah, public comment. We forgot.
Yeah, we'll open up public comment. Thank you, Sarah, for keeping us on track. The dial number 650-898-6965. Do we have anyone, Emily? Oh, no. It's been a quiet night, hasn't it, Emily? Okay, we'll close public comment, bring it back. Excuse me, sorry.
Back to my motion that, that Mayor Beer and Councilmember Beckmeyer serve on the ad hoc committee for the Coast Pride celebration. Who seconds that?
Who can?
I'll second it.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
The motion for nomination by Councilmember Vodilas of Mayor Beer and Councilmember Beckmeyer to serve on the ad hoc subcommittee, seconded by Councilmember O'Neal, passes unanimously.
Thank you so much, Sarah. We'll go into adjourn our meeting at 9:29 in honor of, can you say the names of the guests?
In memory of Jerry Tricocci.
You know what? In memory of Jerry Tricocci from the school board who passed away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, good night, everyone.